We can't.
Great, thank you.
You should be okay. Can everyone hear remote? Can you hear us in the room?
Can't.
Can you hear Carrie?
I don't see the lights.
We can hear you pretty well, Carrie. It's a little difficult to hear y'all, but I think we can make it work if we have to.
I think as long as you're speaking up while you're speaking, we can hear you okay.
And Mr. Schofield, Kelly Parks is now in as an attendee, so if you could promote her to panelist, that would be great.
She's been promoted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll be right next door.
What's on the door closing? Mr. Atherton, is the door closing happening in the room y'all are in?
Todd just left.
Todd left.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out if someone needed to be muted because they were too loud, but that makes...
There was two activities. Todd left the room and then we have an outside door open to get fresh air in here, so we were...
Gosh, that makes sense. Okay, we will get started in just a moment. Is Dr. Felder here? That is the main... Oh, I think I see her.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I just want to check that my mic's working.
You are working. We can hear you, Ms. Parks. Glad to have you. Good to see you, Kelly. Thanks for being here tonight. I'm here, Mrs. McKenzie. Great.
Hello.
All right, we will get going in just a second. I'm just rearranging all of the screens I've got going. Right. Our IT friends, we can hear you. Could you all please mute before we start the meeting? Thank you. Good evening, everybody. You all can still hear me well? It is Monday, February 8th, and I am calling this board meeting to order. Orange County Schools Board of Education pledges to our families, students, staff, and the greater community to conduct our business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards all staff members and each other. As per board policy, Robert's Rules of Order will be used to conduct meetings, and a moment of silence will be observed before we begin our business. Public comment will be held tonight after the board adopts the agenda. Orange County Schools educates our students on the traditional land of the Okanichi Band of the Suppani Nation. As we reflect this month and every month on the history of Black and Indigenous people here, may we use our individual roles to dismantle oppressive systems and policies. We will now have a moment of silence. Thank you for that. Dr. Felder, I will now turn it over to you for tonight's recognitions.
All right, wonderful. Thank you so much, Mrs. McKenzie. Give me one second here. Lots of tabs open. All right, there we go. All right, well, thank you and good evening Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, the entire Board of Education, to our students, staff, families, and community members. Tonight, I am so pleased to share four recognitions that we have this evening. The first recognition is with regards to Black History Month. And so, Black History Month is also known as African-American History Month in the United States. It is an annual observance in not only the United States, but it is observed in Canada, the United Kingdom, and the Netherlands. It began as a way for remembering important people and events in the history of African-American diaspora. And so, tonight, while there are untold numbers of Black people to celebrate and honor for their contributions to their community, state, and country, standing tall among them is Orange County Schools' very own Dr. Kazmikia Corbett, the lead investigator of the COVID-19 vaccine at the National Institute of Health in Bethesda, Maryland. Her mom, Ms. Rhonda Brooks, is a bookkeeper at Central Elementary School. She shared the following inspirational message from Dr. Corbett with all schools, and we are sharing that message with everyone tonight. Well, she's awfully beautiful. We can see her, but we can't hear her, unfortunately. Don't know why. Well, how about we pause, and if we have time to come back later on, we will, but I will say that we will certainly post this inspirational message on the district's website. And I know that every school has access to Dr. Corbett's inspirational message, and we hope that it's shared with all of our students, so thank you. And so, the next recognition is for Orange County Schools' counselors. Our school counselors play an important role in ensuring that students have received excellent educational experiences. Our school counselors are part of a school... I'm sorry, is someone's mic open?
Oh, it might be mine. I apologize.
No worries. It happens to all of us. No big deal. Okay, so, school counselors are part of a school support team who provide essential social-emotional support in addition to academic support to students. School counseling programs help to increase student achievement and provide a much-needed resource for students, parents, teachers, and administrators. School counselors are absolutely an integral part of student success. So, last week was National School Counseling Week, and so, Orange County Schools is very fortunate to have 23 outstanding school counselors. We are very fortunate to have a counselor, at least one in every school, and they work under the leadership of Dr., I'm sorry, Ms. Sharita Cobb, speaking that into existence, Ms. Cobb, Director of Student Services. And so, we want to recognize Ms. Cobb and each of the district schools' counselors for the tremendously important work they do every day to improve student outcomes. So, thank you and a big round of applause to our district's wonderful school counselor. Indeed. And so, Ms. Cobb, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say, I just want to just emphasize what you said, Dr. Felder, about recognizing and appreciating and thanking our counselors for their leadership, their support throughout all that we've been through with COVID-19. They have been phenomenal, and we really want to thank them for supporting our students and families along with the other student support staff. So, we thank you for your unparalleled work, and you are appreciated. So, just know that much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb. All right. So, there are more recognitions to come, and so, the next recognition is for our district's 54 bus drivers, six of whom are faithful substitute drivers. So, Governor Cooper has proclaimed this week, February 8th through the 12th, as School Bus Driver Appreciation in the state of North Carolina. I cannot say enough about our drivers, have been on the front lines since we closed in March 2020, delivering instructional materials and meals to our students. They are now engaged in transporting students to and from school, okay, and first graders, as well as students who are coming back for some small group work. And so, and since our return to school in October, as well as in support of the operation of our supervised learning labs in the fall, our drivers have been safely transporting students daily, and we cannot thank them enough. And so, with that, I'm going to turn things over to the Director of Transportation, and that would be Mr. Larry Albert. So, Mr. Albert.
Hello, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. Good evening, Madam Chairman McKenzie, Vice Chairman Stevens, board members, and all in attendance. I'm truly honored to have this opportunity to recognize one of the, one of transportation's true heartbeats of our daily operation, our dedicated, hard-working student transporters and safety assistants. This week, like Dr. Felder said, is Bus Driver Appreciation Week. Their hard work can never, ever truly be recognized enough. They wear many hats on a daily basis prior to the pandemic. As we all know, this year has been daunting, to say the least, but our dedicated drivers and safety assistants have stood up and filled multiple gaps across the district. These awesome individuals set the tone for every child's day, being the first, as well as the last, Orange County school employee to see them. But not limited to telling all bus drivers and safety assistants, "Thank you for all that they do, and we appreciate it."
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Albert, for your leadership, and thank you, and a big round of applause to all of our wonderful drivers. We appreciate you all. Thank you. All right. And so, that brings us to the next and last recognition for this evening. And so, and so, we want to tonight recognize our Equity Warriors for the month of February. Equity Warriors are people who, regardless of their role in a school or district, passionately lead and embrace the mission of high levels of achievement for all students, regardless of race, social class, ethnicity, culture, disability, or language proficiency. And so, tonight, Dr. Deana Keeling, our Chief Equity Officer, will help us recognize our February Equity Warriors. Dr. Keeling.
Good evening, everyone. One of the conditions for engaging in courageous conversations about race is to normalize multiple perspectives. It means recognizing that people have different points of view based on their experience. It's a task that many adults struggle with, especially when it comes to topics of race. I was first introduced to the Cedar Ridge Black Student Union when I attended their lunchtime roundtable discussion on Black Lives, on the Black Lives Matter movement and its impact on the Orange County Schools' community. The group had invited students' leaders from other organizations to participate, including those with differing views on the Black Lives Matter movement. The way the student leaders moderated the discussion was a model of how we should all attempt to hear and understand perspectives that may differ from our own. Leila Valentine and Demi Fanecha came up with the idea to develop the Cedar Ridge Black Student Union after participating in discussions about the Black Lives Matter movement and the civil protests of the summer of 2020. Last fall, they formally organized the Black Student Union, making this the first year Cedar Ridge has had an active club dedicated to social justice and service. Leila came up with the idea of creating an organization focused on educating other students on current events and social issues, providing opportunities for challenging discussions around race relations, and doing service projects. Last month, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Day of Service, the members of the Black Student Union engaged in the upkeep and cleanup of the Greer Cemetery in Durham. Greer is a historical cemetery for African-Americans that was developed during a time when Black people were not allowed to be buried in white cemeteries. The students accomplished the task while following COVID guidelines. They remained masked, they were outdoors, and they maintained social distancing and had limited contact with each other. According to Demi, the Black Student Union is not only about service, but about Black students at Cedar Ridge seeing people like them and having student leaders to trust and to talk to about their emotions and experiences. There are not many Black students at Cedar Ridge. We are not just a club that talks. We try to teach our fellow students how to affect change and contribute to the community. We teach them about social justice, and we teach our members how to be kid activists. Affirming, supporting, and educating students, and being of service to the community are the exact descriptors, descriptors of an Equity Warrior. And that is why the Black Student Union at Cedar Ridge High School are this month's Equity Warriors. And encourage everyone to read more about the Black Student Union on the OCS website and on the social media. And if you know an Equity Warrior, please contact me so that they can be recognized too. Congratulations to the Black Student Union at Cedar Ridge.
Chair McKenzie, that concludes recognitions for this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you, everyone. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Don't move.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Smiley. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Howser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Our agenda has been adopted. Now is the time for public comments. After each speaker has been recognized and unmuted, they will have three minutes to speak. The board will not have a discussion with any speaker. No profane or vulgar language will be permitted, or personal abuse against any person. Public comments should not address any specific confidential student or personnel matter. Complaints concerning any specific employer or student are not permissible during public comments. Let me pull up my list of speakers. And refresh it one last time. Our first speaker is Ashley Nasworth. Please let us know when she's been unmuted.
Ms. Nasworth, can you speak, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking as a parent of two students, first and fourth grades in Orange County, and a mental health professional with over 15 years working with children and families. First, I want to say I'm appreciative of the board's decision to allow kindergarten and first to return. Though without the strong advocacy of parents who are medical professionals, I do not believe that they would be in the classroom today. I'm going to shut my door because I think my dog is in the background. Okay, sorry about that. It's been 332 days since my fourth grader and thousands of other students in Orange County have seen the entire classroom. Now, the state is moving through State Bill 37, which is being discussed tonight, mandating that schools reopen to in-person learning for all students who are interested. This is consistent with the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, and federal government recommendations based on the scientific research that continues to come out identifying limited risk and secondary transmission with appropriate mitigating strategy. Dr. Felder and her team have worked hard to let science guide them in developing their protocols, and they have done a wonderful job. Our board should not have to be mandated to do what we know is right, open the schools for all students in a slow, staggered way, starting now. This is the safest way to open schools for teachers and students. It allows opportunities to assess and modify as needed with smaller groups of students. We know the damage being done from remote learning is increased food insecurity, rapidly widening achievement, achievement gap, which will have long-term economic and societal impact, unreported child abuse, neglect, increased mental illness and suicides. Our children are spending all day on a screen, which is shown to correlate with increased risk for ADHD, anxiety, and depression, not to mention obesity. Right or wrong, we know that schools fill these needs for so many of our children. My fourth grader regularly complains of headaches now. I suspect it's a combination of prolonged screen time and anxiety. Children often use thematic complaints when they are worried or anxious because they don't know how to articulate those feelings. She asks almost daily when she can return to school. I don't answer with any projected date because I don't want her to have that disappointment when a date comes and goes and still isn't at school. She has friends who have pride of younger siblings returning, and they can't, or they wonder why the younger siblings are younger, in general, or special. My AIG student, who loves learning and is successful, now regularly tells me she doesn't like school or doesn't want to learn today. I hear similar stories from these parents. COVID-19 is not going anywhere. In August, we needed to wait for better metrics. In September and October, we needed to get ready, quote, "get ready," despite meeting the metrics. And now, it seems people are waiting for teachers to be vaccinated or waiting to see what happens with the State Bill 37. A wait-and-see approach does not move us forward. We have to move forward now on our own terms without having to worry about rushing something through because the state mandates it. While I realize this is not an action item tonight on the agenda, I would like to remind the board it wasn't an action item when it was delayed, go to delay reopening, so I strongly encourage someone to take leadership on this issue and make a motion to move forward with slow, steady reopening, as proposed by Dr. Felder previously. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nasworth. The next speaker this evening is Hillary Crittenden.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. Thank you, members of the board. I'm the mother of two Orange County School District students. I have a junior at Cedar Ridge High School. I have an eighth grader at Stanback Middle School. I'm a family nurse practitioner at the Duke Cancer Center. I have closely watched the actions of this school, excuse me, school board since the COVID-19 pandemic forced school closures last spring. While engaged, I've remained fairly quiet until now. I assured my kids again and again that based on the metrics set forth by the board, they would be returning to school in at least a hybrid environment by early March of 2021. Frankly, I was stunned to learn that the board voted four to three in favor of pushing this date out once again, and that is why I'm now speaking up. As a healthcare professional, I follow the science. The CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the ABC Science Collaborative all recommend that children be allowed to return to school with safety measures in place. They further clearly document the detrimental effect that prolonged absence from schools is having on our children. Specifically, kids are suffering academically and emotionally. Children already at risk are suffering the most. Dr. Felder presented a compelling rationale for safe return for our kids and their teachers, and yet, this board made the decision to again delay opening of schools. The fact that an effective and safe vaccine has been developed in less than a year from the first confirmed COVID case is nothing short of astounding. For many months, scientists estimated that we might have to wait years before we had an effective vaccine. Would we have had to wait for years to open schools in this case? We know that masks work, social distancing works, reduce class size, increase safety, and screening increases safety. The science is clear. Vaccinations are wonderful, and we hope that all school staff and ultimately all students will have the opportunity to be vaccinated, but we cannot make this a criteria for opening the schools. I've worked in an outpatient clinic setting, providing direct care to patients since the pandemic began. I wear a mask, sometimes two, for 10 hours a day. I wear eye protection, and in the case of a COVID patient, I wear a full set of PPE. I did this long before I knew when a vaccine would be horizon, would be on the horizon. I'm writing, as a parent who's losing faith in this board, we no longer know what to tell our kids. We're running out of ways to keep them motivated and engaged. It's difficult to find much for them to look forward to, and this shouldn't be. I'm writing tonight, as a parent, a privilege. I can't imagine what it would be like for parents who have to decide between their own employment and their children's well-being. It's time for the board to listen to the scientists. It's time for this board to put into practice the educational equity that they preach. Our kids deserve better, and we can do this armed with science, creativity, and determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crittenden. Our next speaker is Danielle Price.
Looking for that name. Hold on a sec.
Thank you.
I don't see a Danielle Price listed. Sorry.
Have you checked the phone number?
Hold on one second. Try now. Danielle Price, are you on the, on the call?
Mr. McKenzie, I just got a text from a college doctor thing. She has...
Okay, very good. Thank you, Ms. Howser. Our next speaker tonight is Brian Kubler.
Mr. Kubler, please go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. All right. So, I would like to comment regarding the Plan B initiative for return to school and the impact on student learning with remote learning instruction. The statements made online regarding students excelling in online learning recently does not give an accurate representation of remote learning situations for students, caregivers, and families. Our student has been very dissatisfied with remote learning. Sitting at a computer screen for the day is a lot to ask of a child, or even an adult. Yet, they and their teachers have risen to the challenge, making the best of the situation. But I would hardly call the remote learning "excelling." I'd like to outline Orange County's statements made regarding available options to families and the failures to deliver repeatedly. I would also like to ask if any of the board members send their students to remote learning camps every day, Monday through Friday, all day. Not having an option to stay home to reduce your bubble? Many parents in Hillsborough are families that do not have options to work from home, including our family. We have to rely on remote learning camps at a church in a neighboring town to send our elementary student to each day. Yet, we are privileged and fortunate for the ability to do this. Other families, we know, do not have this option. I propose studying ways that some of these camps have adapted to the challenges, and hearing their suggestions and process would be helpful in implementing on a larger level. Hillsborough had one learning lab at the YMCA site that was shut down. Why was this site shut down? What resources are, what resources are there now in Hillsborough for parents that don't work from home? We have received emails indicating that remote learning labs are being made available. When we have asked about remote learning lab options this year, we were directed to a few people, neither of which was able to provide any further information. In the beginning of the pandemic, there was discussion on how to utilize middle schools and high schools to help spread out elementary groups, yet we have not seen any action. It seems like a logical way that would have helped bring back at least elementary kids initially while still maintaining social distancing. I would like to know what the challenges and red tape are in doing this. At the beginning of the school year, our student was promised a new computer. The board did not plan on how many students needed computers, and we received a refurbished Chromebook while being promised to receive a new one shortly into the quarter. No new computer now, and no communication about when, if ever, a new one will be received. We were also given a socio-emotional survey for students in September who would like to speak with a guidance counselor. We provided input on the survey and wanted those to be provided to the guidance counselor. After weeks of waiting, we decided to follow up. We were disappointed to learn that the guidance counselors at our school never received the data. Shortly before students were supposed to go back to school, at least on hybrid in January, we received an email that the board did not send student back because they did not know how to handle lunchtime and they needed time to purchase air purifiers. We've been waiting a year. This last minute thought process, we feel, is unacceptable. Why are we just now thinking about these type of, these types of situations when I feel like we could have planned a little bit better and had the foresight for something like this? Thanks for listening, you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Kubler. Our next speaker tonight is Dr. Marcy Loyzell.
Sorry, is that a phone, a phone participant? Please speak, Dr. Loyzell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Marcy Loyzell. I'm a parent of a fourth grader and a kindergartner, and I'm here to speak on behalf of over two hundred families who signed a petition urging the school board to reopen schools now. As you know, four thousand families in Orange County opted for Plan B. I urge you to proactively act now, consistent with other local school districts to reopen school prior to any legislative mandate. Phasing in students on February twenty second will allow you to follow policies recommended by the ABC Collaborative and other experts. It only increases risk to open schools at once without time to implement any phased-in policies. I think you all are aware that recent research has demonstrated that the risk to teachers and staff who are masked and socially distanced is extraordinarily small compared to the known ongoing and increasing risks to students. We are now aware of increased suicide rates, mental health conditions, food insecurity, rates of grade and course failure, and unidentified child abuse. We're also aware of the impact of social isolation and a widening achievement gap in disenfranchised population. As a psychologist and parent, I see the overwhelming evidence that students are suffering due to prolonged school closure of almost a year now. And the effects of this will be seen for months and years to come. As a parent, it pains me to ask for in-person learning for my children to be able to attend four of the ten eligible school days every two weeks they're entitled to. Parents are overwhelmed, and some parents are afraid to speak out. They're afraid that sharing their opinion is viewed as not supporting the concerns and fears of teachers. I feel Dr. Felder said it best, that a vote for in-person learning is not a vote against teachers. I'm an essential worker, and when a patient comes to see me, I don't think they're trying to harm me for seeking services. There are just some things we can do remotely and some we can't. And when we can't, we pivot. It's time to admit that for some children, remote learning is not effective and to no longer deny them inadequate education. Having students learn in person and ensuring teacher safety are not on opposing sides. Rather, it's really a question of how you can ensure students access to an education while assuring teacher safety, and we know how to do this. It's working for pre-K through grade one. I find it very troubling. We live in a county where restaurants, bars, and gyms are open and school sports are approved to continue where we know transmission rates are higher. But in-person learning is not allowed. All guidance states that schools should be the last to close and the first to reopen. I think the board has done an extraordinary job of preparing classrooms for safe reentry. Plans that were instituted prior to what we feel as a parents are unexpected and unannounced face reentry plans for January eleventh. As this board has expressed a commitment to equity, I urge you to act now. Failure to act is dooming those students who can't speak for themselves and to families who are too overwhelmed to speak. I don't think our students can wait any longer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Charlotte Critten.
Ms. Crittenden, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity for us to voice our opinions tonight. My name is Charlotte Crittenden, and I am speaking as a junior enrolled in IB and honors level classes at Cedar Ridge High School. It has been eleven months since I've been in a classroom, and I'm suffering academically for the first time because I've been stuck attending school from home for nearly a year. I can say now with over a semester's worth of experience that being in the classroom is necessary for the motivation and morale of students. We all thought that it, that we would be going back to school in late February, which was difficult, but it gave us all something to look forward to. Hearing that we now must wait another nine weeks is the most crushing news we could have received. Students are missing out on so many opportunities, academic or otherwise, because the board is keeping us out of school. As a member of my high school choir, we haven't been able to perform concerts. As an IB student, I haven't been able to do physics labs and experiments with my peers. I haven't even been, been able to eat lunch outside with my friends between classes. Before COVID-19 forced schools to close, I enjoyed going to classes and learning with my friends. Now I get headaches almost every day from staring at a screen for seven hours nonstop and logging onto my computer frankly does not bring me any joy. I know so many other great students who are in the same exact situation. Many have lost all hope that we will go back to school at all this year. I'm asking you to consider the perspective of students like me. Thank you so much, and I look forward to hearing about your plan to get us back into the classroom as soon as possible because we cannot wait any longer.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Teri Stein.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, good evening, and first I wanted to say thank you to the board members for all the time you've invested this year in making these impossible decisions. I really don't envy your position at all. And for any teachers listening tonight, thank you, thank you, thank you. Doesn't even begin to come close to being the right words. I am blown away by your efforts this year. I'm a management consultant with four children in the district, a third grader, a fifth grader, a seventh grader, and a ninth grader, as well as a two-year-old in a family that has been extremely COVID cautious. And slowly, over the course of this school year, I have watched my children's motivation to succeed and their joy for school subside, slowly turning into apathy. And I really don't want to complain about that because I know that sadly there are so many more children out there in situations that are infinitely more challenging than ours. To that end, I'd like to speak tonight to the Plan B update agenda item and specifically about the potential outcome of Senate Bill Thirty Seven. With the bill going to vote tomorrow, I can imagine the temptation to wait and see what happens to minimize potential change after a year of continually adjusting to moving targets. However, the wait and see approach would be a huge gamble. Should the bill go into law, we would have only fifteen days to get into the classroom everyone that wants to be there in person. Having all the students return at once would be highly problematic, both logistically and from a risk perspective. Schools need time to walk through their protocols with small numbers to work out the kinks. Therefore, it is imperative for us to be proactive in getting ahead of the matter. We had a solid plan in place for bringing students back methodically and safely. And from everything I'm hearing, it's worked wonderfully for K one. Restarting the staggered return ASAP, maybe even perhaps as early as February twenty second for the rest of our students would have a number of advantages. First, as previously mentioned, it would allow more margin for implementing logistics and adapting them as needed. Second, for families and children that have been struggling with remote learning, it would show forward progress towards getting students back into the classroom and re-energizing them around learning. While simultaneously, it would allow, having fewer students come back all at once would continue to provide plenty of capacity in the building to ensure maximum social distancing for a few more weeks. Third, this plan would help us argue for prioritizing teachers in the vaccination groupings since only teachers physically teaching in the workplace setting will be in group three. And fourth, this plan would also support your targeted April twelfth date for having all hybrid students back in the classroom, even if SB Thirty Seven doesn't pass. In short, COVID is here to stay. As challenging and scary as it may be, we have to take another baby step forward as we begin to learn to live with it. Slow and methodically will be better than haphazardly to meet a state mandate. Thank you so much for your time tonight, and I'm looking forward to hearing your plan for getting our students back in the classroom after almost a year hiatus.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Hall.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Jeff.
Thanks. Good to be here. I wanted to talk about the agenda item about the naming of schools that is match item for later this evening. And I wanted to remind the board that names aren't just names. Early in my army career, I met someone who would become one of my best friends. Our relationship started with a name. We originally bonded because we shared the same first name. Further conversations would reveal a number of other similarities of both personal history and experience. It turned out that he and I had a lot in common. We did our initial training together, and we worked together at Fort Hood. We would both end up at Fort Bragg, and we both served in Iraq and Afghanistan. We had our kids around the same time, and we even attended the same church where we were co-leaders of the youth group. We were very close. Once, we were out at lunch together, and a young black soldier walked by in uniform, and I noticed that his name tape said Hall. Hey, I said to my friend, that's cool. He and I have the same name. My friend, who's black, looked at me. Jeff, he said. All that means is that someone in your family owned someone in his family. Names aren't just names, he said. They're markers. We went on to have a long conversation about the fact that while we shared many similarities, he and I often existed in very different worlds. We had very different experiences of an America we would both fight for and both sacrifice for. One of the things that he reminded me of is that many of the things I saw as part of the background, if I saw them at all, were acutely painful reminders to him of the horrific history overcome by his ancestors. To me, it was just a Confederate flag on a truck or a name on a uniform that matched mine or serving on a base named for a Southern Civil War general. To him, they weren't names. They were wounds. They mattered. After all, names aren't just names. They're markers. Names matter. They have power. They have the power to hurt, and they have the power to heal. What we call something can call attention to what it is and what it can be. What a community decides to name a school tells the world who that community is and who it wants to be. I would ask that every member of the board and every resident of the county consider who they are and who they want to be. Think of the names of the schools in Orange County. Are they named for who you want to honor? Are they given proper context? After all, names aren't just names. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Our next speaker this evening is Heather Redding.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. As a resident of Orange County, I'd like to speak in support of action item K two, which also pertains to the renaming of some of our county schools. While some might criticize the timing of this action item, given that we're in the midst of a global pandemic, this is a racial equity issue. Racial inequity is another public health crisis, one that also impacts health, education, and overall well-being. There's no ideal time for this discussion as dismantling white supremacy will never be convenient, and there will always be excuses to wait. Regarding the school names, I fully support changing the names of Cameron Park Elementary and CW Stanford Middle Schools to new names that are in alignment with the school board's equity policies. Doing so would not only acknowledge the history of white supremacy in Orange County, but also align with other local efforts to promote racial equity. In twenty seventeen, the Orange County School Board banned the Confederate flag in its new dress code. Yet today, we send our children to an elementary school named after one of the largest slaveholding families in North Carolina. Just this past December, our county commissioners passed a resolution to support reparations. Yet, we send our children to a school that honors a family that took part in enslaving over nine hundred human beings. This past June, the Hillsborough Town Council passed a resolution committed to dismantling systemic racism in town government. Yet we send our kids to an elementary school in Hillsborough that venerates a family whose prominence and wealth was built on the purchase of exploitation and sale of human bodies. I know many people are largely focused right now on how to keep our teachers and children safe while also promoting effective learning, and I support these efforts. But renaming our schools is an action that the Orange County School Board can take right now. It is more than just a symbolic action. It is one that signals a commitment to racial equity beyond just passing resolutions. It is well documented that the pandemic has impacted a disproportionate number of black and brown communities. It has also shed light on existing racial inequities that range from socioeconomic to access to healthcare and educational resources. As we tackle one public health issue, we must treat white supremacy as another public health crisis. We can't eradicate COVID overnight, but we can take action to remove ongoing symptoms of white supremacy. Changing building names will erase racial inequities, but not taking a very simple action like changing a building's name is allowing white supremacy to persist. Thank you for your ongoing commitment to the health and to the well-being of our students, teachers, and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Redding. Our next speaker is Jessica Harrell.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. For a little background, I'm both a scientist and I'm the mother of two children, one currently in private school who does in-person learning a few times a week and one in elementary school in Orange County Schools, enrolled in a hundred percent virtual learning. I've been reading a lot of the discussion about opening OCS schools on social media, and I felt compelled to share my perspective. I recognize that reopening schools is a very polarizing issue, and there's absolutely nothing that this board and district is going to decide that will make everyone happy. And I don't envy the position that you all are in. These are tough decisions. But I have a few points that I want to make from my own perspective. So first, I want to encourage the board to pay most attention to the data and the science and to make logical decisions and implement policies based on that. I'm concerned that the discussion often involves fears and feelings more than scientific data and information. We're a year into this pandemic, and we know a lot more than we did a year ago. We know a lot more about what safety measures are going to contain the spread of the virus, and the data tells us that wearing masks and social distancing works to prevent the spread. Schools can absolutely reopen in a safe way, and there is plenty of data to tell us that. The question of whether the district has the funding and resources to do this is an entire other conversation. So I do encourage you to outline a specific plan that includes what you realistically need and how much it's going to cost. And I'm certain parents will be willing to advocate to the county and state for these resources. That's something I think we as parents can do to help. Personally, I'm teaching a course at a local university in person because I know that is what is best for the students. I'm not vaccinated yet, but I feel like safety measures that are in place in terms of masks and social distancing are mitigating the risk of spread in the classroom. The reality is that we need to learn how to live in this pandemic in a safe way in order to be able to resume some sense of normalcy. We all need this. Second, I want to provide one perspective as a parent that I don't think is getting much attention and I'm afraid isn't being considered. I've chosen to keep my OCS elementary school child in the virtual mode this year, as I mentioned, but that's not necessarily a reflection of whether I would be willing to have her back in school. I chose the virtual option because I don't think that hybrid option is a good option for her. The one weekend and one week out is disruptive to routine, which most kids crave and honestly what many families need. In addition, I'm not interested in a week of asynchronous learning in between her in-person weeks. I can't imagine that it's as conducive to learning as having a teacher lead the classroom in a virtual environment like we have now. And I'm definitely not interested in having her be remote in a classroom with a teacher that is in person with other students in person at the same time. So for me, we're either going to stay all virtual or we're going back all in person. And I'm bringing this to your attention because I don't want there to be an assumption that just because we've decided to remain virtual means we aren't interested and wouldn't take advantage of in-person learning. So I urge you to follow the governor's recommendations and Secretary Cohen's recommendations for Plan A for elementary schools as quickly as possible. The hybrid format is disruptive for kids and families that need consistency. And if this option is going to be considered, it brings me to my third point. And if this option is going to be considered, it brings me to my third point, because I would imagine you'll need to do surveys of teachers and families again. And so my third point is that surveys that have been sent out thus far to understand what parents would choose have been vaguely worded, even just without enough information for parents to be able to make good decisions, and certainly haven't captured all of the data that it could potentially capture. I'm sure there are going to be more surveys as we move forward, and I implore you to think about what data and information you need out of those surveys, and design the questions to help you get that data and information. There are people who understand the art of designing surveys to get the most data out of the questions you're asking, so I encourage you to utilize professional resources to design and implement your surveys. I speak for myself and I've talked to many others who are left frustrated by the wording of the questions and the lost potential to gather useful data and information. And perhaps even the surveys may be done best at the individual school level, since the data that you need to gather may be different for an elementary school, a middle school, high school student. The needs are going to be different.
Ms. Harrell, Ms. Harrell, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up. Your timer went off quite a bit ago.
I'm so sorry. Okay.
That's okay.
Thank you so much. I am done, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate you. Our next speaker is Rob Cardone.
I'm not seeing him. Let me look. I'm not seeing Mr. Rob Cardone. I'm sorry.
Have you checked for his number?
Yes.
Okay. Our next speaker is Ms. Lori Bateman.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi. Good evening to the board and the district. For background, I'm a research scientist and have an elementary school student in Orange County schools. I'd like to start by just echoing every single thing that Mrs. Masworth, Mrs. Crittenden, Ms. Crittenden, Mr. Kubler, Ms. Louise L., as well as Mrs. Harrell echoed about opening up our schools as soon as possible. So I won't touch on all of their points, but I will say that I do echo every statement that they all made. I would ask that the board stop ignoring all of the higher positions of intelligence, expertise, and leadership, and act on the clear guidance provided versus continuing to ignore and push out, otherwise pushing out opinion-based decisions. The most recent lady that spoke, I believe Ms. Harrell, talked about her decision to keep her child at home, but her preference really is to be back in person. And she spoke on this idea that it should not be taken by those who choose to keep their kids at home, that that truly is their preference, and I fall in that same category. I have chosen to keep my child at home, and that's simply because that's what we can do, rather than do the back and forth, or do, you know, 21 days in person, which to me just seemed pointless. So I wanted to echo all of that. My next comment is actually on the school renaming agenda item. And I just wanted to say, based on what Mr. Hall said, as well as the lady who spoke on this topic, I value and appreciate everything that they said this evening on the topic, and I do not have any pause around renaming schools whatsoever. And my comment is more towards the process that's in place to do so. I would encourage the board and the staff charged with this item to really consider providing exact resources and exact references, and make that information transparent. And those on focus groups charged with gathering this information, who are they? How were they chosen? All of that is important information for the community to really understand and get behind you when you start talking about renaming, which, again, I agree, is likely very, very necessary. And so please take my comment as one to speak to the process that's in place, because I myself went and saw where on the materials provided, it says "the appendix", and there is no appendix to be found. And I will say, perhaps I wasn't looking in the right place, but I looked pretty hard and couldn't find those references that were mentioned in the document as in the appendix. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Our next speaker is Amber Bowman.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Dr. Bowman.
Okay, thanks. I'm a physician at the Durham VA Medical Center, parent of three boys in Orange County schools, and the wife of an Orange County teacher. I'm speaking today to discuss the changes in the reopening plan that were made by the board on January 11th. After advocating for the K-1 reopening, I did not anticipate speaking out further. Hearing the hardships, however, from nurses at a recent vaccine blitz, I felt the need to strongly reconsider. While one parent shared concerns of her son's struggling performance and inability to work with him given her nursing schedule, I also learned of another child being left home daily at age nine because his parents were both working. I certainly suspected instances such as these, but to hear them personally was impactful. I know how challenging this has been on our family with two working parents, and continue to see the emotional struggles of my oldest son. I have been personally encountering COVID-19 and its effects for nearly a year now. I am fortunate to have confidence in the mitigation strategies from my work. I have rounded with other physicians and interacted in small workrooms, only to find out the following day that a physician is positive, and see that none of us contracted it from that physician. Not to mention the number of patients I cared for early last year before we were allowed to use N95s when interacting with COVID patients. There's not a single person who wants this to be quote-unquote "over" more than me. But as you have likely heard of this pandemic, it does not have a nice or sudden end that we can wait for. The reality is that there's going to continue to be more strains, which will raise questions about the vaccines and mitigation strategies. The goal of having zeroed COVID-19 in the building is unattainable, and thus the board must recognize this and move forward now. The scientific data is sound, and the board continues to not acknowledge the recommendations of the CDC. How can you allow sports to continue where we know there's higher risk of transmission, but prohibit in-school instruction for grades 2 through 12? How are you weighing the risks and benefits of those decisions? Never in my career have I ignored the CDC guidelines in the care of my patients. You should not for your students and staff. You cannot pick and choose which data you want to believe and follow. The board has three options. You can do nothing and wait for SB 37 to pass, and watch teachers, administrators be forced to have a rushed opening with 15 days' notice, and not have the safety of a gradual reopening. This is a failure to your teachers and staff. You can continue with the current plan to reopen grades 2 through 12 in April all at once, and again, subject students, teachers, and staff to the increased risks that come with opening to a large number of people at once. Or you can decide to go with the science and convert this plan to a gradual entry, but know that it will take weeks to a month for all Plan B students to have a chance to return. A failure to both teachers and students. Or you can vote tonight to reopen grades 2, 3, 6, and 9 on February 22nd and phase in the suppression of grades in a gradual but expedited manner. This plan will allow staff, administrators, and teachers time to implement and adapt their COVID policies and target the transition grades, as well as younger students who continue to struggle the most with the virtual environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bowman. Our next speaker is James C. Stanford.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. I wish to address on your action agenda item K, topic number two, that's titled "School Names Research." My name is James C. Stanford. My grandfather was Charles Witten, Stanford, who Stanford Middle School is named after. And I first want to just go through a couple, three topics very quickly. My family had no idea that this was a possibility, that this change in the name might even take place until this morning. And, you know, my first question, I guess, to the school board would be, why didn't somebody reach out to the family? To my knowledge, nobody has. My grandfather's daughter, only living daughter, lives in the house where he grew up. She was not contacted. My mother, his daughter-in-law, along with my Aunt Joyce, another daughter-in-law, also lives in Orange County. Not contacted. There are nine grandchildren of Charles Stanford living in Orange County, including myself. To my knowledge, none were contacted. I don't understand why there was not at least a courtesy notice that this change in the name of the school named after him would not take place. And I'm further astonished that the research that was done concerning my grandfather, that there was no input allowed or requested from those that arguably knew him best. So I'm very disturbed by the fact that this has been done without any contact or notice to the family. Second, and I'll follow up with some comments from an earlier speaker, in looking at your document titled "Review of School Names Feedback", I have to make the observations that within it, it quite frankly wobbles back and forth. For instance, statements like "I would need to know more about Stanford proposals." There are quotes in there, "consistent lack of funding," unquote, but there's no attribution as to where that quote came from. There are statements like "if my assumption of Stanford's meanings regarding segregation are proven unfounded, I see no issue in keeping the name." I can go on and on about the waffling back and forth. It appears there's ifs. I think the name could possibly change. I'm not sure. It points to my concern that his support of education was not equal along the racial divides. It has no facts. It has only opinions, conjecture, and speculation. There are no sources listed. There's no review of any of his actual voting records when he served on the Orange County School Board for 26 years. The second document that I think has been presented for your review is something entitled "Review the Names of OCS School Buildings." And I note in the process that there were internet searches and collected information from sources such as newspaper articles. Why not family? Why were we not contacted? I'm just astounded. So, you know, I would argue to you that, you know, this is supposed to be research based in equity or equitable in nature. And how can that be when it's so patently unfair, patently unfair to his memory? And I will tell you from my perspective, if this were evidence or opinion, and it was presented in a court of law, it would be thrown out. So I'm very proud of my family's public service to Orange County, and I think you should be also. I would ask the board to table this action, agenda, action item, until adequate research can be performed, and the basis upon which you make any sort of decision would be properly vetted. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stanford. I hope that you'll be able to stay for our discussion about this, where I think that you'll hear a little bit more. Our next speaker this evening is Kristin Driggers.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. I don't have any formal comments prepared tonight, but I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak. And I'm a parent of two elementary school students here in Orange County. And while my children are what I consider lucky ones, they are not without their struggles. And as we struggle to try to do elementary school virtually, I think every single day about the children in our system that have to cook their own lunches, that have to be at home by themselves, otherwise they're not going to get dinner on the table that night. And I also think about the beginning of the school year where COVID was, you know, nine months old, and we didn't know what was going on. And now we have a lot of science and data to back up ways that we can all try to move forward in hopes that a vaccine, once widely rolled out, is actually going to work long-term. And I'm asking for you guys to consider those that are struggling more than my family. Not to mention, you know, my family as well. It's a tough day today. My daughter was supposed to be going to back to school in person. Her brother is there, and he's had the best four days of his whole school year. And we have to figure out how to move forward, do it safely. And I echo those that say, let's make the baby steps that we need, especially for our most vulnerable students, as Dr. Felder has echoed in some of the meetings. So I asked somebody, make a motion tonight and step up, and let's get the ball rolling, and know that you're going to have a lot of parents that are willing to help and support in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Driggers. Our next speaker is Jamie Pollan.
Jamie, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie, and thank you to everybody on the school board for soliciting input tonight from parents who are clearly struggling with the difficulties of the pandemic. I'm here to speak on the topic of renaming the schools. As a person who, for the last several years, has been involved in Confederate symbology and imagery, I encourage the district, and the board in particular, to take a look at the names of all of the schools in the district to see which of them it would be appropriate to look at the naming of. And in particular, this is a really important time to be looking at this issue. I believe that there are windows of opportunity where making such significant changes are appropriate. And just within the last few months, the Orange County Courthouse has removed a portrait of Thomas Ruffin. And then, in her last act as the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, Sherry Beasley removed a portrait, a large portrait, of Thomas Ruffin, who was a well-known slaveholder in North Carolina. And to have a school named after a large slaveholding family in the district is extremely problematic. And I appreciate that the school district is taking a look at this issue. And as one of the other speakers said, there's no good time to deal with the issue of white supremacy. And it could be easily put off due to a lot of the other concerns that are going on right now. But the opportunity and the window is here, and I encourage the district to rename Cameron Park. I'm just not as familiar with the history of the middle school, but I believe that if Dr. Keeling has taken a look at it and believes that it's appropriate to rename the school, that it's really not appropriate to ask the family of the person that the school was named after, whether they approve of the decision to change that name. So again, I appreciate that the district is looking at it. And thank you so much, Ms. McKenzie, for your leadership in all of the current difficulty.
Thank you, Ms. Pollan. Our next speaker this evening is Robin Mulkey.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can.
Okay, first, the last speaker said the family shouldn't be concerned as far as the comments that have been said, and the emails, and the various comments. How can you not be concerned when they're talking about your grandpa? The family was not notified at all. They know how to get ahold of us. We live on Stanford, some of us live on Stanford Road. The phone numbers for my mother Joyce and my Aunt Trish have been the same for eons. When they claim... When they claim they don't know how to get ahold of us, including your chair, they lie. You do know how to get ahold of us. Two, respect Robert's rules of order. Y'all seem to just throw it out the window. Respect our children's education. Where are your priorities that we're even talking about this? When our children's lives and our children's education are in chaos? You vote to change names on schools? Then you say that's your priority, that it has nothing to do with education? You haven't explained to any of us in the various emails we sent that why do you want to change this? Why does it violate your policy 1030? Why is this acceptable? When I look at the list of feedback, I can find no idea who the stakeholders are. None of us were contacted. No parent of a school system was contacted. But you have these comments where you assume, and we all know what that means, but you assume to listen to hearsay about a man you didn't know. You talk about equity. How is it equitable that you're going to judge my grandfather without knowing him? Talk to the people that knew him. Talk to Caleb Moore. Talk to Tommy Leonard. Talk to various people that worked in the school system then. When I went to look at the validation of the information you had, there's no appendix available. When I asked for committee minutes, they're not available. None of this was communicated to anyone. If you're talking about equity, talk about why this is so important that you're talking about it tonight and not worried about how our children are being educated. You talk about equity, talk about how you're judging my grandfather, a man that served this county. You're going by, what if he didn't take this? What if that? You know, you don't care. You don't care about maligning and disrespecting a man that you can't even bother to spell his name correctly? You know, where does his name being on that school violate your policy 1030? Where's your proof? Yeah, there's nothing that went back to. And, you know, your little beefers going off, and I think, okay, they don't care about Robert's rules of order. Why should I? But to put information out there and have to go through 15 hoops to connect on the internet. If you're not on the internet, you can't even go look at your agenda. It's not possible. You don't want to malign the name of my grandfather? Explain to me why. Show me the proof. And don't go on assumptions and hearsay. More importantly, get to the business of taking care of, educating our children now, not--
Thank you, Ms. Mulkey. We appreciate your comments. I hope you'll be able to stay around for the conversation.
Yeah, teach me how to say point of order without being online.
Our next speaker this evening is Jessica Farrell.
Ms. Farrell? Jessica Farrell, you're, hold on. You are unmuted, Jessica?
Ms. Farrell, are you there?
She is unmuted.
Ms. Farrell?
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, my goodness. I am so sorry.
That's okay.
Good evening. So I never imagined that I would be speaking at a board meeting. Speaking is definitely not my specialty, especially about a sensitive and emotionally charged topic. And I only decided one hour before this meeting to speak. My husband and I have two children in Orange County schools, a first grader and a fourth grader. We have also been working in the frontline positions for the last year. I can say that while our schedules challenge us daily, we know that our challenges don't compare to the adjustment and struggle that our children have been and are currently encountering. Since my first grader has returned to in-person, he is a changed student. On the in-person days, he wakes up with an excitement that I have not seen in the last year. He sees the glass half-full truly. He speaks of playing with his friends on the playground, saying hello to his teachers in the hallway, and also learning math in fun ways. He does not speak of having to mask or socially distance, although I know these things are followed completely. He has accepted this as his new reality. On the days he is doing virtual learning, he is completely disengaged. He struggles to find any type of excitement, no matter how hard I try. He has amazing teachers. They give him all they have and then some. Since returning to in-person, it's become clear that he gets more out of one day of in-person learning than out of one week of remote learning with me at home. My fourth grader is still waiting to go back into a building. He literally prays every night that he will have the chance to go in-person like his brother. It is heartbreaking to drop our first grader off with our fourth grader in the backseat. He always says, "I wish I could go back. When will I get to go back?" as we drive away. My fourth grader has always been a good student, yet lately I see his struggles. He has headaches multiple times per week, which our pediatrician directly relates to increased screen time. He is losing motivation to complete his assignments, and he desperately misses his friends and teachers. Again, he has amazing teachers, and this is not to their own shortcoming. I come to you tonight as a parent to address the board. I am desperate to see the board take forward steps prior to April. I ask that you do not wait on SB 37. I ask that you continue with forward thinking. I ask that we take the position of leaders. I ask that you continue to recognize that supporting students and supporting teachers is not one or the other. We can do both, and we should do both. Our family has been blessed with some amazing teachers that we are truly grateful for. I request that you follow science. It is safe to reopen schools. I sincerely thank the board members that supported the efforts to allow K through 1 back into the buildings. It is truly because of you that my first grader saw the inside of a school building again, and I got to see my joyful learner return. I beg you to have the same consideration for my fourth grader. I ask all board members to consider taking these steps tonight and adding in additional grades. Our children need us to keep walking. We cannot stay stagnant. Our children depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Our next speaker is Jamie Crandall.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So hi, I am a mom of a second grader and a fourth grader, both, for disclosure, who are planning to stay remote because it's working for us better than we think the high road model would. I also have a five-year-old who has been safely attending his school in person since he went back in August. So my position on the reopening is based on two things. My professional opinion as a public health researcher and statistician on the faculty of the School of Public Health at UNC, and also what I know to be the needs of many families in our community. So that's my first point tonight. I won't reiterate what everyone else said because you've heard all the science, but the science shows that the benefits of reopening outweigh the risks. And tonight I am advocating for a gradual reopening, beginning as soon as logistically possible. So I hope we're able to get more kids back in school. But even if we do, it won't make up for the fact that this year has not been good or ideal, I'll say, for student learning, which is my second point. Now is the time to prepare for the 2122 school year. Some students, probably lots of students, feel like they have been failing. They need to continue to hear that what feels like their own failure was not them, but because they were in a pandemic. And when achievement has been low, families need to know that the district is working to meet their needs. This has to be something beyond just some summer school and hoping they, quote, "catch up" with more work next year. This is a big opportunity for creativity in the district and for broadly listening to many families and students about what they individually need. And finally, I know we're all concerned about the achievement gap in the longer term. And we don't have data yet, but we know that the pandemic has made it worse. And whatever steps we take to work towards recovering from this difficult year can be used to teach us in the longer term how we can address that gap. That's all I have. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you so much. Our final speaker tonight is Edward Mann.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Great, thank you, thank you. Good evening. My name's Edward Mann, and I'd like to speak with you this evening regarding the School Names Research Agenda Item K2, specifically related to CW Stanford Middle School. My mom is Jean Stanford Mann, the only remaining child of Charles W. and Mary M. Stanford still alive. And I'm one of 10 grandchildren, 10 of their grandchildren, in Orange County. We only learned of this item this morning, and we were surprised and very disappointed that no one contacted or even attempted to contact anyone in our family regarding this matter. In researching board meeting minutes and reports today, all we could find is a summary of findings that was supposedly posted for public review and that references an appendix that is not attached and which I've been able to locate or access. The other document was a report, was a feedback report that appears to have no clear context or supporting details. I would like to request that you not consider any decision related to the name of CW Stanford Middle School at this time, and that you direct staff to prepare and provide a comprehensive and fact-based report for your and the public's review, so an informed and objective decision can be made. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. That concludes our public comment for this evening. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Moore. Is that correct? Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiling?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Our consent agenda has been adopted. The first item on our agenda this evening is Plan B Updates. Dr. Felder?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. McKenzie. And so would first like to just review all of the outcomes for tonight's meeting. So those should be projected. And so tonight, board members will have an opportunity to receive an update on Plan B to include pending legislation, Senate Bill 37 on reopening schools. We're also going to provide an update with regards to our kindergarten and first grade students' return. You'll hear about successes and challenges from the school's principals. You will get an update on students' attendance and data with regards to staffing vacancies and staff attendance. Then the board will have opportunity to take action on. What you will also get an update on, and that is regarding Plan B budget items. So that would be the one action item from the updates on Plan B. Next, you will receive information on the impact of COVID-19 on students' physical and mental health, as well as received information about student achievement. And then last but not least, an opportunity to make decisions with regards to the school names research. So those are our outcomes for the board for this evening. Any questions about tonight's outcomes? All right, if there are no questions, we'll move to the next slide. And that would be the beginning of the Plan B updates. And so a number of items here, they're all listed. And we will kick off with pending legislation regarding the opening of schools, Senate Bill 37. And if we can go to the next slide, I'd like to introduce someone you all are very familiar with, and that's Ms. Eva Dubuson. She is the board's attorney. Her specialty is education law, and she's with Barrington Smith Law Firm. Ms. Dubuson?
Thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm going to provide a brief update on the pending legislation. It's in the state senate right now and is up for a final vote in the senate tomorrow. Just want to summarize what's in the bill and what isn't. So Senate Bill 37, and there's a copy in your materials, mandates that school systems provide the option of in-person instruction to all students K through 12, and also requires that school districts provide an all-virtual option. What the bill says is that districts must provide all students K-12 with in-person instruction option that's either Plan B or Plan A, and must provide students that have IEPs or 504 plans with an option that is Plan A. Now, the bill does not define Plan B or Plan A. It just refers to the Strong Schools Toolkit, which is put out by DHHS. And the bill was amended and updated last week so that it now references the current toolkit, which was released on February 1st. And so I do want to note that there's sort of, the terms Plan B and Plan A have been thrown around a lot. And people have a certain understanding of what they mean. But the bill does not define anything in terms of number of days or scheduling or whether there are cohorts, and neither does the toolkit. What the difference between Plan B and Plan A under the toolkit. And I will say that the toolkit and under state law that was passed last summer, all school systems have to have a Plan A, a Plan B, and a Plan C, which is fully remote, so that school systems can be ready to switch between those plans. Plan A and Plan B involve most of the public health safety requirements of the toolkit, including full-time masking, avoiding group activities or congregating in, you know, work and social distancing. The difference between Plan B and Plan A is that Plan B includes requiring six feet of distance between students and staff at all times when students are stationary. So meaning, under Plan B, you are moving your desks, your tables, everything at least six feet apart, and you're limiting yourself to no more than one child per bus seat. And that schools may need to limit the numbers of students and teachers in the building at any one time in order to make that happen. But it doesn't dictate, you know, it leaves it to local school systems to determine how they can implement those measures, given the space, given the number of staff that they have, and the number of students who choose in-person. And so that's why it's going to vary from district to district. The Senate Bill 37 goes on to say that school systems can adjust student assignments, school assignments as necessary to implement this plan, and preserves for school systems the ability to shift a single classroom or school to remote learning if necessitated by a potential exposure event or lack of staff because of staff quarantines. So either student or staff quarantines may result in needing to close a school or a classroom temporarily, and that ability is still preserved. And so that's really the entirety of the bill. It does say that it would be effective 15 days after it becomes law, which would be after it passes, assuming it passes the senate tomorrow. It then goes through the House. It then goes to the governor, who either signs it or doesn't sign it, but doesn't veto it. Then it would, by operation of law, go into effect, then 15 more days. So I'm happy to answer questions about that. But that's the general summary of what's in the bill currently.
Ms. Doyle?
Just one question. Thank you, Ms. Dubuson. And I had read this at one point and forgot. Is it 15 working days, the three weeks? Or is it 15 days or two weeks?
Two weeks. It's 15 days. Well, it says, no-- schools must be implementing it no later than the first weekday that occurs 15 days following the effective date of the act. So if 15 days follows-- So if 15 days follows on a weekend, then the following Monday.
Mr. Atherton?
So I think we all know that the Senate Bill 37 is, I think we have an opportunity to leave here for the safety of our staff, students, and teachers. We should start sixth and ninth grade now, based on the science and learning how to safely do this and continue to bring in other grades. If we wait for SB 37 come into law, we will have no options, no opportunity to learn and adjust in a very unsafe environment. I've visited the DC, pre-K, K, first grade, and it isn't easy. It takes a lot of time planning for my teachers, staff, and our principals. I'd like to know if there are other board members that support the staging of our grades now versus waiting?
I also support getting the Plan B grades back, and I was wondering, aside from this bill, with our air purifier order, roughly 25 air purifiers seem to be free. I went through and counted the second grade teachers, for example, across the seven schools. And so if we are designing that requirement to be met, which is the requirement we established earlier in January, I would like to know, can we work toward like second, ninth, and getting 25 back to the air purifier and do it that way? I definitely support bringing that up, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, I'll just throw my voice in too. I agree with Mr. Atherton and Ms. Doyle, that it's, if we're concerned about students' safety, that it's safer, science tells us that it's safer for us to start now and bring our students back gradually than wait for the bill and bring them back all at once. So feel that it's really worried about the safety of our students and our teachers. We need to get going.
Other board members? It would be helpful for me, Dr. Felder, I, I'm sorry, Ms. Doyle, I think maybe you touched on this, but I'm having a really hard time hearing you. It would be helpful for me to understand where we are with the air purifier order and how quickly we could get those in?
Thank you, Mrs. McKenzie. So I understand that we can start receiving the air purifiers on February 15th, and we should have them all by March 26. So Dr. Dawson, I don't know if you want to add more to that, but that's my understanding. The bid closed on Friday, and, and so from that process, February 15th, we can also, I understand, purchase outside of that bidding process, but it's only a small amount.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Other comments from the board? Ms. Moore, are you raising your hand? No, okay. Um, so I will just throw out there that I do think it is very likely that Senate Bill 37 is going to pass, and I am concerned about our students all coming back on one day. I don't, I, I'm willing to have discussions about what that might look like and what a schedule for that could look like. I, I, I do feel really strongly about air purifiers, and I'm happy to hear that they should be getting here soon. So I don't know if that leaves us in a position where we might just want to call a meeting if we can come, if there is a plan that makes sense for a slow return with air purifiers. I don't know if that is something the district is prepared to discuss tonight. I, I, I kind of sit on the fence because I'm, I'm concerned, and I do think a slower rollout is safer, and I think that we're going to be mandated. So that's kind of where I'm at right now.
So if I may address your wondering, Mrs. McKenzie, about tonight, no, we're not prepared to discuss a slower rollout tonight, but we can be tomorrow, or this week, I'll put it that way. So we can discuss it this week. Yeah.
I know for me personally, I, you know, I would like some more information. I'd like to get really tight dates about air purifiers. How about we put our heads together and talk about if, what, what this could look like and how soon we can get plans together? I don't necessarily think tomorrow is, has to be tomorrow, but, yeah. Okay, very good. Thanks, everyone.
We've already been thinking about it, so it's, we can definitely collaborate around that.
Right. And, and Madam Chair, I would say that I, I agree with that. While, while I agree that, you know, we're ready for the students to come back into the classroom, I'd like to hear Dr. Felder's plan for a rollout a little slower so that she'll have an opportunity to plan it, you know. So I agree, and I know that she will have it done in a day or two, maybe tonight.
She'll be emailing it at 4:30.
I know, like, 2 o'clock this morning, and she'll be sending it to us. I know.
Ms. Moore?
Um, for clarification, I didn't hear Mr. Atherton very well. He mentioned something about grade six, but I couldn't figure out the rest of what he said. So could you please restate what you were asking about grade six through nine, Mr. Atherton?
Yes, Ms. Moore, all I was saying was, I would like us to roll this out as we originally planned slower, which would include sixth and ninth grade to get students back into a building that they haven't been in. And I was asking what other board members feel like or support a rollout now versus waiting for the SB 37.
Okay, thank you.
So if I may, I just, to be clear for the minutes, and it might, it may be that someone wants to make a motion, or you may want to wait until, I mean, I know the rest of the presentation is about an update on Plan B, which, which you haven't had yet, but-
That's correct.
-it might be a motion instructing the staff on what sort of plan you're asking them to bring back, whether that's a plan for a speedy or staggered reentry, or, just because we've heard a few different suggestions, and I want to make sure it's clear what sort of plan they're being asked to bring back.
Right. But I, I'd like to hear what the staff is going to present before, you know, I jump right out there.
Yeah, I, I feel sort of the same way. I think it's really important for us to hear what staff feel that they can, can do safely. I know personally that this mandate is pushing really hard for Plan A, and I don't think that there's any way that I can support that. I think making sure that we are distancing as the rule, not the exception, is incredibly important to me personally. So I won't vote yes for a Plan A situation. I understand that 504s and IEPs have to have it, but I'm just going to lay it out there that that's not going to work for me in my comfort level. So I just wanted to throw that in there. Other board members, Ms. Hauser?
I just wanted to say that our teachers are paying close attention to all of this, and the uncertainty is very difficult for them. And it's, so I think the sooner we can meet and discuss it, the better for, for everybody, so that people can begin to, begin to plan.
Thank you. Okay, well, we will be, Dr. Felder and I will be in touch with the board, and we will call a meeting when we are ready to discuss what a slow rollout could look like. Mr. Atherton?
So we're, we're anticipating that meeting this week, right?
I'm sorry?
We're anticipating that meeting this week, right?
I mean, what's-
Timing on this, just-
I mean, I, I don't know that I can answer that when I have, we have to work with staff and work schedules and coordinate with the board and the attorney. So I think that's going to be something we just have to work through, but, you know, we, we'll see how quickly we can pull it together. Oh, I know that, I heard a lot of support around air purifiers, and it doesn't sound like the bulk of those are going to be in before the end of February. So I don't, you know, I, I don't think it needs to be tomorrow or the next day, but we will work expeditiously to have the conversation. And I think also, you know, we just need to say, I, I'm not promising how I'm going to vote at this point. I, I need to hear the plan, I need to hear what safety precautions are put in place, but I'm will, I'm personally willing to have the conversation. That's where I'm at.
And, and that makes sense. The main thing, as Bonnie had mentioned, is, you know, the teachers and everybody making plans and being prepared regardless of when it happens. And I agree with you, want to see the plan, want to see how it happens, want to understand transportation, staffing, all of that, but I, I don't want to wait till the air purifiers are here for us to decide that. We should have it before and that rolls in.
That wasn't certainly what I was saying. I think that I was pretty clear that I'm happy to work with staff and the board to coordinate when we can do it. I mean, I don't, I, Monday night seemed to be a night that worked for lots of people, so it's possible it'll be next Monday night. I would not anticipate it would be further out than that, but I need to talk to everybody's schedule, so.
That's fair.
Anybody else have anything before we move to the next item? Very good. The next, um, I, I will, um, put, back to Dr. Felder.
All right, well, thank you, Mrs. McKenzie. And so the next item, well, we actually provided an update at the January 25th board meeting with regards to Plan B signup, and when we reflected on and reviewed the data, there wasn't much change at all. And so what you see on these next two slides, 13 and 14, only reflect K and one, but our data, two to 12 hasn't changed much at all. And so again, here are the data for, with regards to Plan B signup, for our K1 students, we know that they're back. And so we want to give two schools an opportunity to share with the board what that's looking like. So where, where are their successes? Where might there be some challenges? And to provide that overview are two of our awesome elementary school principals. We have joining us tonight the principal of Grady A. Brown Elementary School, Mr. Christopher Marks, and he will be followed by Ms. Minnie Goins, who is principal of Eflin Cheeks and the district's reigning principal of the year. So with that, if we can go to the, advance to the next two, yeah, there we go. All right, so I'm going to turn things over at this time to Mr. Marks.
Thank you, Dr. Felder, and thank you so much, board, for having us tonight, just to kind of give us an update on some things that's going on in the schools with our kindergarten, our first grade students returning back in the building. I know myself and Ms. Goins have gladly seen some of the faces, the smiling faces behind the masks as they come into the schools, and probably overall, kind of, my, my main takeaway point is just the joy and the excitement that the students have when they've been coming back into the buildings, even with all the protocols in place, even with all the safety things in place, everything that we have in place that is abnormal for a normal school year in a school building, there's overall excitement and joy. It's just been an overall smooth transition back into the building, and I think that's because of our deep relational capacity that our teachers have been able to generate using a technology that we have. There's lots of skepticism at the beginning of the year with the teachers, how in the world are we going to be able to create classroom culture through a screen? And believe it or not, it happened, and relationships have formed with our kids and with our families throughout Orange County schools and Grady Brown and Eflin Cheeks. Some of the pictures that you're scrolling through, you see some of the safety measures in place, we have some of the items that keep student, school supplies separate in their own containers. You see our seats social distance, six feet apart, that they're able to maintain that distance. You'll see some of our students wear a mask during recess, they transition through the hallways. Our hallways have safety protocols in place where they kind of indicate what side of the hallway to be on, using a social distance. We have space arms being used by our kindergarten students, they hold their arms like they're floating through space, and we just, we're allowed to do some of those normal things that we've been looking forward to doing within the, the protocols that we've been given through our operations department, through guys like Dr. Felder and her team. So we appreciate that. And some of the challenges have already been mentioned by some of the folks who have spoken tonight, as well as some of the board members have voiced already at this time, and we recognize the challenges. We are going to continue working through Plan B. We look forward to that, and I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Goins, because I know she's got some good things to say about her school and her staff as well.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, all other members. Thank you for this opportunity to talk with you. I want to echo what Mr. Marks said about the enthusiasm, the excitement that we've seen on our students' faces and in turn, even our teachers. The students have been able to follow protocols. I will say that our kindergartners, with the orientation process, were able to do these things a little bit more quickly than our first graders, who really had to have some time to adapt to those protocols. But overall, our teachers are saying they're doing a great job, and when I see them and observe them in different areas around the building, whether they're eating lunch, whether they're transitioning, they are following those safety protocols. And I'll tell you, a lot of that has to do with the time that we've had to prepare, to prepare our teachers, and to talk to our families and to our students about the expectations. So you'll see some of the classroom setups, which look quite different from when the students left, as far as first graders, and our teachers are adhering to that, but they're still making the spaces welcoming and inviting for students. The colorful things that they're using, the way that they are still seeking to engage students, as Chris was talking about, the relationship is so critical. Some of the challenges that we are facing deals with teachers having to teach both that remote and in-person student, and being able to do that and do that well. None of our teachers have asked why. All of our teachers have asked, how can I do this and do this well and do it better? And then they've worked to do just that. And so making sure that we are able to provide those staff members with breaks throughout the day, so some of those kinds of logistical challenges are the things that we're currently dealing with. But as far as preparing instruction for students, showing the caring for students, making sure that they're kept safe, all of those things are happening as a result of a lot of the work that happened prior to them coming into the building. And so that's just about, that's about everything I do believe regarding the update. Lots of things going on, and I will say too, the, the quick turnaround for some decisions, right, and being prepared, but because our teachers are so amazing, the principals talk all the time about how they adjust, how they adapt, and they've done that, and they've done that quite well throughout this school year. And all the work, all the passion, all the care has been quite commendable in spite of even some of the challenges that they are facing personally. Not only are the families enduring a pandemic, but some of our staff members are also experiencing loss and challenges, and they are still fully present for our students every day. So thank you to everyone in the district who has helped, and thank you again for this opportunity to share this update with you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, were you?
Nope, you, you go right ahead, here, McKenzie.
Thank you, Principal Goins and Principal Marks. We really appreciate the update. It's great to see kids back and seeing their little faces in our buildings.
Were there any questions or comments for Ms. Goins or Mr. Marks before we move on to attendance?
Sure. Mr. Atherton?
No, I would just like to add, as I mentioned earlier, I have been able to attend all the grades that have been coming back and it has been phenomenal how these teachers are managing all of the things going on in front of them, online and being very inclusive. I think it's amazing, you know, the students' interactions, how well the protocols are followed. No time did I see a student without their mask or someone having a safety mask on or to walk around, even in the timing and must be focus and details that are being done to make everybody safe. And I just wanted to echo thank you to all of these teachers. I know it is stressful. I know that it's not easy. Do you believe in the slow approach is what has led to success for these teachers and staff?
Other board members? Okay.
All right. Well, thank you again, Mrs. Goines and Mr. Marks. And I just have to say that the successes, while they are definitely challenges, we know that, we are working through them. But we would not be where we are today without the phenomenal principals and teachers and staff that we have. Again, our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our admin assistants. The safety protocols are followed to the T, the detailed plans that the school developed. The, all of the work that they put into ensuring that their buildings were ready has made a huge difference. And, and so the credit belongs to them. And so I want to publicly thank every, every staff person for all of the support that they have poured into this effort in ensuring our students can return and do so safely. So thank you all. All right. So the next update will be with regards to attendance and I'm going to invite Ms. Crystal Fought, who is the Director of Testing and Accountability for the District. So Ms. Fought.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Vice Chair, Superintendent and all of those who are in attendance. During our September 14th board meeting, we reviewed the attendance procedures for Plan C, Remote Learning. And in remote learning, students are considered present off-site if they complete one of the following. Their daily assignment either online or offline, that they are present during synchronous instruction and/or they have a daily check-in or a two-way communication with their appropriate teacher. The attendance procedure for Plan B are blended in-person and remote learning is as follows. Students are expected to be in attendance for class daily and present for each session. Teachers will take daily or period attendance of the learners. Students who are working remotely are manually marked present off-site. And students attending in-person default to onsite. Of course, the new attendance codes and procedures were created by the NCDPI in response to our remote, shift to remote learning last spring. I'd like to note that our school teams are doing a great job of making certain that attendance is accurate and that it remains up to date as we prepare to bring additional students back to in-person learning. So in relationship to attendance, and we can go to the next slide. The board has been receiving bi-weekly reports on absences by subgroup and grade level. And so the final absence report for Semester One is included in tonight's presentation. Each of the charts reflects the percentage of total absences. The first slide shows the K8 level. And you will note that the highest percentage of absences existed in the white, Hispanic and black subgroups for grades six, seven and eight, which is our middle school levels. If you could go to the next slide, we'll look lastly at the 9, 12 grade level. And the highest percentage of absences existed in the white, Hispanic and black subgroups. At, for the high schools, this was at or in, the highest existed in grade nine and then followed closely by grade 10 and 11. So the percentage of total absences reached a record low at the end of the semester for our secondary students. Of course, the percentage of each subgroup is relative to the size of the subgroup within our school districts. And I'd also like to note that our quarters have historically been about 45 days. However, this year with us having a longer school year, our semester existed of 96 days. I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Smiley.
Thank you, Ms. Fought. I just, I have two questions, which you may or may not have in front of you. But one is how the absences compare to last year, sort of overall absences in the distribution. And then how many students are in, I know, like, how many students have recurring absences? So like a large number of absences? I would, yeah, understanding that extreme would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. I'm taking notes and we'll gather that information for you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Howther?
No question.
Mr. Atherton?
I do have a question, maybe the same, I had the first same question as Smiley about how does this compare to last year? But I do have a question maybe for Dr. Felder and staff. Is, do we know how this absenteeism is going to affect our graduation and dropout rate yet? Or do we have a feeling of how that's going to be? I know if we have last year's to compare, we might have a better idea, but and I do know that we have counselors and others outreach and to try to help with some of these, but do we have any insight?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Atherton. Indeed, there, there is a lot of outreach on behalf of teachers, counselors, social workers, et cetera, to help mitigate concerns around graduation and dropout rate. But I will need to confer with staff to give you a more definitive response.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Doyle?
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Fought about the subgroups with the demographics. Because roughly, I recall that white students, for example, are maybe 55% of our student population. So, you know, so if our white students, Hispanic students and black students are our three largest groups, I don't, it seems obvious that they have the most absences. So I'm not sure if I'm seeing percentage compared to the population. So are among students who are absent, do we have certain subgroups overrepresented and certain subgroups underrepresented? Or are we just seeing here proportions of demographics?
Ms. Doyle, I would say on the smaller end, we have, of course, fewer students and those numbers remain consistently small. The reverse is not necessarily true across all of the grade levels. But I'd be happy to share out additional information to help answer that question.
Thank you.
I believe I am to put to Ms. Cunningham Brown perhaps, or back to Dr. Felder?
You are absolutely correct, Ms. Fought. So next up would be, and thank you, Ms. Fought. Next up is Ms. Cunningham Brown, Chief Human Resources. And Ms. Brown will provide an update on staffing vacancies, staff ADA update and staff absenteeism. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. Good evening, Chair McKenzie, Vice Chair Stevens, board members and the community. Like updates with regards to vacancies, ADA updates and staff absenteeism. The first update is our weekly vacancy report. Call your attention to elementary classroom vacancies. We have one elementary classroom vacancy. Going to call your attention to the non-classroom vacancy with our AIG position. We are continuing to interview for that position. However, students are receiving services from our district educators and coaches who are providing support to those students. As it relates to middle school vacancies, we have five classroom, middle school vacancies, three non-classroom vacancies. For high school, we have zero classroom vacancies and one EC, general ed teacher vacancies. Lastly, regarding our classified vacancies, we have 21 classified vacancies. But I want to call your attention to some of the reoccurring positions that we post each week in an effort to increase our applicant pool. So we post our custodian positions, childcare monitors, supervised learning lab positions, TA positions and cafeteria, our child nutrition services positions. So again, the effort there is to increase our applicant pool. Next slide, please. This particular slide gives an overview of our ADA and that's our American with Disabilities Act and staff members who have applied for reasonable accommodations under that provision. I want to call your attention to our teachers. We have 89 total teachers that have requested ADA accommodations and 34 who have been approved thus far to remain remote. So although our teacher numbers can increase or decrease, a lot of that is based on whether we're in Plan C or Plan B. So as we transition back to in-person, then some of the teachers that are working remotely will be coming back to in-person instruction as well. Another point to make is regarding our elementary. You'll notice that we have 39 teachers. However, many of those teachers have been identified as the virtual teacher. So again, just working with our principals and working collaboratively to make sure that we are meeting the needs of teachers, we are assigning some of those teachers that are ADA teachers to our virtual opportunities. The chart at the bottom gives you a snapshot by school of the ADA requests. And despite the fact that we have 146 total ADA cases at this time, 71 are again remote. And as we transition and have a staggered return to Plan B, then those numbers will start to go down more. And if legislation is passed with the Bill 37 that will require us to come back, that will have an impact on our ADA and how we look at what is essential. If the legislation says we're required to come back to school, then that no longer makes remote a reasonable accommodation in some cases. But again, we look at each case individually and work the principal and the staff appropriately. The last slide that I'd like to share with you this evening is regard to absenteeism. So this is a seven-week snapshot of absenteeism. And I want to call your attention to a lot of absenteeism is based on quarantines. So, and it also correlates, if you look at times right after a holiday, it does correlate with what the community is saying that we'll see an increase in quarantines after a holiday. But despite this fact, and again, it gives you a snapshot, even a weekly total of quarantines. But despite these numbers, and I'll go to the last slide just to summarize this. How do we use this particular information? Well, this information we can use to help predict the needs for subs. And we talked in our last board meeting about our three-tier framework for substitutes. And so based on this chart, we can predict some of our sub needs in the district. Other ways that we are using this data and probably most importantly is what we want to emphasize is that despite the quarantines, that we are still able to have qualified teachers and qualified substitutes in classrooms. So, you know, I know that quarantines will ebb and flow and we'll continue to work with that. But at the end of the day, that we are still able to provide coverage, depending on what schools require, some of the substitutes may be serving as monitors in the classroom and some of the substitutes may be playing other roles throughout the school. But we are addressing our needs and absenteeism based on COVID results at this time. And I'll pause to see if there are any questions.
Ms. Smiley and then Mr. Atherton?
Ms. Cunningham Brown, first, just that last point is great that we're not having any trouble covering with, given our substitute pool. The question I had, the chart below it that showed the ADA requests, I just wanted to make sure that I understood what the numbers were saying. So it, do I have this right that the teacher row, like 89 teachers requested ADA accommodations? And of those, 34 have been approved to remote work. And so 55 may be required to come back to school.
They're already back, so that
Already back.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, so what are the 39 and 20 and 30 in the columns next to that?
The 39 is elementary, middle and high, so that's the adding up to the 89.
89, okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And Ms. Cunningham Brown, I think of the 89, they're not all requesting remote work. Is that correct? Some may have requested other types of accommodations.
Right. So some may have requested just PPE or a face shield. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Atherton, did you have a question?
Yes. Could you tell me how many substitutes we have in the pool currently?
Yes, and we talked about this at our previous meeting. We have about 50 that district-wide subs. We have five that are central office subs. And we're continuing to recruit subs and we're planning some recruitment events shortly that we'll announce to everybody. Our plans are to have a substitute information fair. That's going to be coming up to recruit additional subs and we're excited about, you know, some other things to recruit and incentivize our substitutes.
Yeah, and I think based on, you know, the absenteeism and the quarantine, subs are going to be very important as we go forward. I've been told by a few schools that the process for subs is everybody gets a list of all the subs. And if you need one, everybody calls to see who on the list is available. Is that true?
Well, let me talk about our substitute system. We have a substitute system. And so prior to COVID, that's what teachers use to request their leave. When we were in remote and we didn't really need substitutes, then principals helped facilitate the need for, you know, how subs were going to be used in their building, oftentimes using available staff like TAs. So as we transition back to in-person, it's going to be imperative that our teachers revisit and use our absentee, our substitute management system. So if they use the substitute management system, that is the first, you know, that's far, that will help ensure that we go down the list of available subs. But if the teacher doesn't put the sub into the system or that particular assignment into the system, then it's going to be imperative for the principal to take care of covering that sub either internally in the school or through one of our central office coverage. So what we're doing, so what we're doing is we're going back to principals and going back to teachers to remind them how to access the substitute system. Because that is the first choice for documenting and getting a substitute. If that answers your question, Mr. Atherton.
If I may just ask, and thank you, Mr. Atherton, for the question and Ms. Cunningham Brown for your response. But Ms. Cunningham Brown, can you nuance that a little more? So you talked about the district substitute system. How does it work? I'm a teacher. I need a sub. What do I do?
Yes, call, and you enter your substitute information in, your name.
I'm sorry, I'm calling, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm calling in the school.
It's a substitute management system.
Thank you.
And you're calling the system to enter in your substitute request. The system then assigns a substitute to that request. And so if the first person doesn't pick up, then it goes down the line of available substitutes for that particular assignment. If you don't put your absence in the substitute system, then the principal oftentimes is the one scrambling to try to find a sub coverage, either calling that list that we talked about of subs that have committed to being available for in-person assignments or the central office list or covering it internally. So it is imperative that our teachers use the substitute system to enter their substitute requests. And again, we're going to revisit this. Our HR staff is going to be visiting principals at their faculty meetings to remind them and assist them with how to access the subsystem. They've done it in the past. They've just stepped away from it when we were in remote. And now that we're going back to in-person, they'll have to resume entering substitutes in that system.
And one of the other things Ms. Cunningham Brown mentioned that will happen in those staff meetings that her team are planning to attend is to also just get feedback from staff, from teachers and principals around what's working with our system and what is not, so that they have further clarity on any challenges that they may not currently be aware of. Ms. Hauser?
Yeah, thank you. I just have to first say, you know, we talk about our teachers and we talk about everyone and how grateful we are. Ms. Cunningham Brown, I think you have far and away the hardest job in this district right now. So thank you for what you're doing. I just, I have a question about what you're saying, but I wondered if I just have a more basic question. And as we have, as I understand, we have a population of 50 subs that are available for assignment. And I was wondering how many are assigned to either long-term subs or to weekly subs or weekly classes if we have vacancies, staff vacancy? And then kind of on a daily basis, how many subs? What's the pool like? Do we have, are we using all of them? Do we have?
I can't really hear the question. Perhaps someone can share the question with me. But I think I heard the most wrong is the applicant pool. We have 50 that are available on a daily basis. And then we have a number of other long-term subs. So we have two kind of categories of subs, the long-term subs, and then we have the 50 daily subs. I didn't hear the rest of the question if someone would like to share that so that I could hear it.
I'll try and be clearer. To answer the first part, what you're saying is the long-term subs don't come out of this pool at all. They come out of a different pool. So that's helpful. Can you hear me?
Yes, I heard that, Ms. Hauser.
Now, the second part is on a daily basis, as you're seeing the increase in absences go up, roughly how many subs in the pool are being used and how many are available? So the real question is, are we going to a critical place in our subs?
At this point, Ms. Hauser, we're not going to a critical base with our subs. But I think the capacity will continue to increase as more and more of our teachers return to in-person learning. So it's not been at a capacity level because we've been in remote. And so as we continue to transition different groups back to in-person learning, then it will impact the pool of substitutes. And that's why we are continuing to aggressively recruit subs.
Okay. And if I heard you correctly in response to Mr. Atherton's question, we have, we have some work to do to make sure our schools know how to request subs when they need to do that process is working properly and that we're working on that. Did I hear that?
Yes, yes, that was accurate. We're always trying to make sure that people know how to access services. And now that we're going back into in-person, it's imperative that we remind our teachers how to access substitutes. And it's something that we are working on. We're working with our principals. Again, as I mentioned, for faculty meetings and as Dr. Felder indicated, getting that feedback from substitutes, I mean, getting the feedback from teachers as to what's working with our subsystem and what's not working. So that if we hear a consistent response of what's not working, we can address that.
I just want to remind everyone of the time, we still have lots of items on our agenda. So I'm just going to ask everyone to save questions unless they are really burning so that we can move on to, well, I think that was the end of Ms. Cunningham Brown's presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
One last question. And that's, and maybe it's every, as you think about reopening, how is quarantining going to affect our teacher load? And do we, as a district, have the option to move to the CDC recommendation of 10-day quarantine with a PCR test, you know, or something? Do you have the option to move to a sort of quarantine period and is that something we're considering?
So we are working with the guidance of our nurses and the health department to adhere to the appropriate days in which a staff member needs to quarantine based on that individual circumstance. So we are working with our nurses to determine that and then working with our staff members with regards to the appropriate leave.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham Brown. The next item on our agenda is Plan B budget-related items. Ms. Rath, thank you.
Yes, hi. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members and the community. I am here this evening to talk with you about some budget items that are in our purview right now that we need to discuss and recommend and hopefully seek approval. The first chart that we have here is one that was presented at the Budget Committee and also presented to the full board reflecting what has already been approved. At the December 14th board meeting, the items listed below here were already approved by the board for us to go forward with spending from our projected budget surplus and our available fund balance. I do want to state before we move into the next slide that the projected budget surplus right now is that. It is a projection. I also want to caveat that this is based upon students, the majority of our students not returning until April the 6th. So as we begin looking at different scenarios, that surplus will decrease as a result of transportation and other costs that we will begin incurring at a higher level than we are right now when students are not in our buildings. So I just think it's important to keep in front of all of us these items that we have already talked about and that have been approved. And if there's not any questions, we'll go to the next slide and we'll begin talking about some of the items that we would like to recommend. Okay, I'm going to go through each of these either fast or slow. The ones that are not self-explanatory will take a little bit of time and I'll dive a little bit deeper into them. But of course, you can always stop me and ask questions as we go. The first item here is we would like to recommend a stipend for our student-facing staff that returned on January the 25th. That was our kindergarten and our first graders, as well as that second tier of EC staff, which I believe returned on December the 8th. That would be a stipend, a one-time stipend. This was what was offered to our EC teachers that were the first to return in October. We would like to recommend offering that to that staff, those student-facing staff that have returned now. The next item is the contracted staff to assist with the laptop deployment. As you recall, we have talked about that those devices are starting to come in. And to ensure safe deployment, this deployment will have to take place in our schools. And we would like to pursue having staff come in and assist with that so our current technology staff can stay focused on assisting teachers and students who are in the building with technology needs. There were some great discussions previously surrounding our subs. And we know that this is an area that we need to make sure that we have a good pool for. And we would like to recommend increasing our daily sub rates for our certified and our non-certified subs, in particular to continue to be competitive with our surrounding districts. At this time, our daily sub rate for our certified or licensed individuals is 108 and our non-certified or unlicensed is 99. We would like to recommend that we follow suit with a neighboring district and increase that to $120 a day for our certified and licensed subs and $112.65 a day for our non-certified and unlicensed subs. Again, the hopes here is to recruit and retain subs to have available as we bring more staff back into the building and may encounter more quarantines, just so that we can ensure we have staff available to be in-person with our students. The next item goes along with that. We are seeing surrounding districts who are also doing this as well, and we would like to recommend it. It's a temporary incentive pay for our substitutes. What we are recommending is if a substitute works five, not five consecutive, if they work five days in a month, that they would receive $100 extra. If they work 10 full days in a month, $250 extra. And if they work 14 full days in a month, $425 extra. Again, this is just to stay competitive and also to recruit substitutes for our students. The next item is self-explanatory, is our pre-K and kindergarten iPad refresh. This was not part of the device refresh for our laptops and our Chromebooks. So we would like to move forward with refreshing those devices. The next item is Book Nook. This was put out for bid for this curriculum resource. And there were two vendors who bubbled up in the process. And after looking at each of these vendors through a rubric with a committee, Book Nook rose to the top. We would like to ask the board tonight, in part of this approval process, to approve the contract with Book Nook upon the final language revisions by the attorney and approval by the attorney as well as the superintendent.
And board members, I don't see that contract in your materials. If you don't have it, I will email you the draft right now.
It is. Thank you, Eva.
That'd be great. Thank you, Ms. Dubison.
The next two items are surrounding air purifiers for our classrooms throughout the district, or let me rephrase that, our instructional spaces. The board asked us to move forward with looking at that cost to place air purifiers in our instructional spaces throughout the district. We did put a bid request out. The bids were opened on Friday. We did have a vendor who was the lowest responsive bidder, who in that process, we had asked for a March the 26th delivery date. And they had stated that they would be able to make those deliveries as early as February the 15th, once they had a signed agreement. We have talked about the new circuits in the five schools in regards to, as we place these air purifiers in all of the instructional spaces in some of our older schools, it's going to overload some of the current circuits. And therefore, those are going to need to be upgraded to carry the load. The next item is air scrubbers for the larger areas for students who may be congregating in gymnasiums, cafeterias, et cetera. We have talked about the disinfectant technicians. These are 14 part-time individuals who will be at our schools, who will be working to keep our high-touch areas sanitized frequently, be working with staff there to make sure that things are disinfected frequently and routinely. We have three COVID captains that we would also like to seek approval for. These would be individuals who would be through the district, who would be responsible for adherence to our three Ws. We have heard multiple times about how pandemic fatigue is evident and does happen. And these COVID captains would be placed and rotate throughout the schools in the districts to monitor this. It's not punitive. It would be more to just help ensure that we are continuing to adhere to those three Ws. The final items there, I believe are self-explanatory. The picnic tables and the pop-up tents and the floor mats are associated with spaces outdoors for our students to be able to eat, to be able to socially distance. Those, that would be picnic tables on all of our school campuses, tents to cover those picnic tables. And then those floor mats are basically a vinyl type of mat that our students could carry with them where they could have those if they chose to sit on the ground outside or even if they chose to maybe sit in another area that they would have something to sit on. And the final item is headphones for our students and our staff. All of the items that are listed here that we would like to recommend and seek approval to proceed with equate to an additional $1.8 million. This will require a fund balance appropriation because the projected budget surplus with what has already been approved would be exceeded with this recommendation. Now, answer any questions?
Mr. Atherton?
Yes, so I have just three questions about Book Nook. The first one is, how many licenses does that cover?
Mr. Atherton, I hope that Dr. Gammon or Dr. Dawson would be available to assist us with that.
Sure, Ms. Rath. I'll be glad to, to start, and thank you, Mr. Atherton, for the question. To start with, we're focusing on 1,000 licenses, but doing it on like a gradual increased scale over time because we're starting at this point in the school year. So we're looking at then increasing as we see the success. So we're looking at then increasing as we see the success of the program. We would then look to increase those over a period of time going into the summer.
Okay. Does this replace anything we have now? Such as, I mean, we have Egg Reader, we have some other reading tools that are being done for remote. I know this is a little different with the smaller groups and interactive, but is this replacing anything or is this more in addition to?
Yeah, at this time, this is being viewed as more of an in addition to what we currently have in place, just because some of the features to this offer pieces as far as like potential in-person support, but also at-home support, community support. It really, it hits all settings, knowing that we've kind of been in flux in and out of school. It serves a purpose, not only during school hours, but it also can be something that's accessible in the evenings, on weekends. So it's very accessible and mobile for us.
Okay, and the last question I had was, I saw that the model is more of a coach and the students. Is that going to be teacher-driven? Or we're thinking the tutors that we've been talking about and doing that extra help? Or a combination?
So the primary focus of the program is that it's tutoring support. Now, it is, the Book Nook will work with us as far as matching tutors with our students and those would be certified tutors. Those tutors could be pulled from within our pool of teachers if necessary, but they also have avenues to pull those tutors from much wider range in their network.
Yeah, you were hitting on exactly what I was asking because it wasn't clear if it was Book Nook providing them or us providing them. So it sounds like it might be a combination.
Well, and it's primarily, it's Book Nook would be the one providing the tutors for us, which is another strength of that program or that platform is that they're able to assist us in that work so that we can reach more students at a quicker frequency.
Oh, thank you.
Other board members, Ms. Hauser, then Ms. Smiley?
I have two questions. One is on the fund balance, the $5.2 million. Are we expecting more money from the $900 billion relief package? And are we expecting, right, so is more money coming from the latest relief package? And then who knows?
Yes, Ms. Hauser. Based upon the latest stimulus bill that was approved at the end of December, we are being told that we can anticipate to fold the funds that we received in the first relief of those CARES funds. So that equates to roughly $3.7 million. That's what we have been communicated to anticipate. We have not seen any final numbers nor have there been any policy approvals. We're told that that is anticipated to go before the State Board of Education in March and that it would be later in April when local education agencies could anticipate those funds being released to them. And they would be federal funds.
Ms. Hauser?
Second question is, is there an opportunity to use community volunteers in the COVID captains and in the compliance roles in schools? I know groups like Kiwanis, Exchange Club and others have asked if they can provide volunteers to help us. And how would that look?
Well, you know me, I am all about free. And, you know, I believe that is something that we could definitely discuss and take a look at as an opportunity.
So, is that up to you?
Ma'am?
Should I get, ask people to get in touch with you if they want to volunteer?
That is fine. I can collaborate with human resources as well as Dr. Felder on what those processes would need to look like for volunteer. There is a process that HR has for people who want to volunteer in the district and vet through that process.
Why don't we, maybe Dr. Felder could let Ms. Hauser know who that contact should be by tomorrow so that she can point people in the correct, most expeditious direction. Great. Ms. Smiley?
So I just want to make sure that I understand the Book Nook piece. So this is basically virtual tutoring for up to 1,000 students, although we may increase that over time, that is based in a rigorous understanding of how students learn to read. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, Ms. Smiley, and it's rooted in the science of reading. I mean, that is the focus there, absolutely.
Great. And can it also be done in person? So I know we have many students at home. We're discussing, some students are back and our K-1 students in particular. You know, I know we're going to look at some of them in class data in a minute. Can it be done in person? Or is it more designed, like the student might be in person in school, but still the tutor might be?
Right, it's more designed for that virtual aspect, but it's definitely something during the process as we work through the service agreement, where they're very flexible and how they're able to best support us so those questions can certainly be raised.
I do want to note, Book Nook is not a North Carolina company. So, I mean, it's virtual in part, you know, they're not, they don't have a staff here.
And is this, are we planning on directing this mainly towards lower elementary or a particular grade range?
So the RFP was written for a K-8 range, so through the middle grades.
Thanks.
And I would just like, I just wanted to add that Book Nook will work with us as far as recruiting volunteers and they'll train and volunteers will help also. And we're also looking at our high school students also being a part of trained tutors for our younger students. So there is a wide range of also the level of intervention that our students need as to the level of tutor. So, you know, it's a mapping based on intervention and the need of our students and the level of our tutors that can be from our high school students to our volunteers, to the trained tutors that Book Nook will also provide in addition to. So it's not a one, it's a very customized tutoring program and that's one of the pieces that was so appealing about this particular program to meet our needs and the needs of our students. And also taking a look at, yes, we are looking at options of in-person as well as remote because, you know, two people can, one, they can share, you know, a screen with a divider. You know, there are ways that we can also bring together. So Book Nook is also very flexible in working with us to meet our needs in that way. And that was another reason why Book Nook was a preferred vendor. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Or do I have a motion to approve these agenda items? I mean, these budget items, excuse me.
Second?
Motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Stevens, Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
I vote yes, Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Our budget items are approved. At this point, I think that we need to regroup and figure out what we want to do because in 20 minutes, we'll have to start motioning to extend this meeting. I know that student achievement is very important to all of us and it's a sensitive topic to talk about putting it on the next agenda. I'm wondering, I know the Stanford family is here listening and so I feel like we have some sort of obligation to have that agenda item discussed this evening, regardless of what we decide to do. So I'm just wondering where folks are at. If we have another meeting to talk about possibly shifting our plans, we could continue a conversation about student achievement. What do y'all think?
Well, I agree with that piece because I don't believe that we need to rush through it or, you know, look at, we'd be looking at the clock thinking, you know, we only have 10 minutes left. So if we're going to have a meeting, say, on Monday or so, perhaps we could put student achievement on that Monday meeting.
Other thoughts about that? Ms. Doyle?
I'm content to change the sequence tonight, but I feel like we've pushed back student achievement a number of times and I would really like it to be digested hopefully tonight in a public setting.
Okay. Other, Mr. Atherton?
I concur. We've been pushing back the achievement data. We were told it must be ready tonight.
Ms. Stevens, we, I'm sorry, Mr. Atherton. Ms. Stevens, will you please be, we're having a really bad kickback. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Atherton, please continue.
It's okay. It's okay. There's still an echo.
Do you want to try now, Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
I don't know what's going on.
Okay. There's still an echo. I would like to go over it tonight to digest it.
Ms. Hauser?
I just agree. We have kicked this can down the road enough times. We've been waiting a long time to hear this and we have to talk about it.
Other thoughts, Ms. Moore, Ms. Smiley?
Well, let me clarify. What I was saying was, you know, I believe it's important and I don't believe that we need to rush through it. And the hour is getting a little later. So doing it is fine, but I really don't want to be like halfway through it and be reminded it's 9:30 or whatever. That was my point. It's too important to rush through or be tired through, you know. So whatever we'd like to do, I don't believe we need to zip through it.
What if we did the literacy contract and school names research and started a conversation about student achievement and see how far we get? I mean, technically, we have 15 minutes at this point. So, I mean, we're just, and I'm willing to stay an extra hour, but, you know, that one thing alone is 75 minutes and that's not even accounting for all of the questions and other things. So I certainly think it is a top priority. I'm not wanting to kick it down the road, but since we're also having a meeting before our next scheduled meeting, I'm just feeling like we're between a rock and a hard place here. So my suggestion would be to do item K, item, the two K items, one and two, and then see if we, Dr. Felder's thoughts about starting student achievement, but I'm concerned that that's going to be a big one.
I wonder if we might also, sorry to jump in. I see that Dr. Zimmerman is here from the ABC Collaborative and I would really love the opportunity just to cover that portion, at least before we move into the other items.
Yes, and if I may, thank you, everyone, for your comments. And to Mrs. Smiley's point, I just wanted to point out what she just mentioned that is, Dr. Zimmerman is with us. And so she's part of that academic social-emotional learning update that you're going to hear tonight. And so certainly would want to give her that opportunity.
Would everyone be okay if we, if we do that next? Then do school names research? Then do the literacy audit contract? And finish the student achievement conversation at our meeting that will happen this week? Even, I'm assuming we'll need a motion for that? Would we?
I mean, it's something you could do by unanimous consent. There's a little different, difficult virtually. So I think a motion to amend the agenda would be better.
Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll move to amend the agenda to what you said.
Okay, so we would have Dr. Zimmerman speak about mental health. We'll talk about school names next. Then the literacy audit contract. That's what this motion is. And then we would follow up with the rest of the student achievement conversation at the follow-up meeting this week. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens and a second from Ms. Moore. Mr. Atherton?
No.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Yes, I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then the agenda has been amended as such and we will have Ms. Zimmerman next. But first, Ms. Doyle's question or comment.
I was also wondering if I could make a motion to extend the meeting until 9:30? For us to do the items that you mentioned.
Yes, we have a motion to extend the meeting till 9:30 from Ms. Doyle. Do we have a second? Second from Ms. Smiley, Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton? Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes, and it's Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, again.
That was a close one. So we are meeting until 9:30 and next we will have a conversation about mental health with Dr. Zimmerman.
And that we will. Thank you so much, Chair McKenzie. But before I introduce and turn things over to Dr. Zimmerman, I want to thank our high school principals. This is their second meeting to present. And so, team, thank you so much for being out tonight and you will definitely have that opportunity very soon. So stay tuned. Thank you again for joining us. All right, so at this time, all right. So at this time, we are pleased to have joining us tonight Dr. Kenesha Zimmerman. She is co-chair of the ABC Science Collaborative and Associate Professor of Pediatrics with Duke University School of Medicine. Her specialty is critical care. Dr. Zimmerman is going to share information regarding the impact of COVID-19 on students' physical and mental well-being. So at this time, we're going to turn things over to Dr. Zimmerman and I believe she may have a few slides to share. And so, Mr. Jones, if you can ensure that she can share her screen. Thank you.
Yes, she's now the presenter.
Thank you. Dr. Zimmerman, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Felder and the rest of the board. I do have a couple of slides to share. I think the most important thing for us to kind of recognize is that we know very little. We've had, you know, comparatively little time to really understand what the impact actually is. Sorry. What the impact actually is for COVID-19 in children, physical and mental health. I'm not really sure what happened. And, let's see here. So... My apologies. I will just talk because I'm not really sure. Something is not happening appropriately, so.
You select, display settings, you can swap it.
Okay. Are you able to see now?
Looks good.
Sorry. So, the most- so, um, the most, the easiest things probably to, um, wrap your head around, I'm not really sure what's happening, so I will just talk. Um, easiest things to wrap your head around are likely, um, you know, the physical effects. We know that, uh, you know, with being at home with COVID, um, there's the potential for more increased activity. And there were a, um, uh, survey that was sent out to parents, um, early on in the year to try to figure out what their thoughts were about COVID-19 and how it had impacted physical activity. And there were certainly a difference in, um, physical activity related to, uh, age with those who are nine to 13 years of age being much less likely to get the same physical activity that they had pre-COVID. Um, there's also been some evaluation of child well-being and parental well-being during COVID-19. There was a national survey that was done, again, pretty early in the pandemic, June 5th through June 10th. Um, there was a new poll that was kind of used in this and they wanted to evaluate physical, mental, behavioral health changes, et cetera. They had 1,101 respondents, um, and were able to demonstrate that about 20% of respondents who were parents actually had worsened physical health. Um, only 4% of children had worsened, um, physical health. There were also changes in parental mental health and child behavioral health with, um, worsened parental mental health of about 27% and child behavioral health worsening at about 14%. There were about 5% and 10% respectively where, um, uh, children actually seemed to improve both in physical health and mental health throughout the pandemic. Um, it's important to note that, again, that this was early, um, but declines in mental health for parents, behavioral health for children and physical health were similar across racial and ethnic groups, income, education groups, and US census regions. Um, females and unmarried parents had more difficulty. They've ex- explored this, uh, more closely in those with neurodevelopmental disabilities and their parents, um, and distributed surveys, uh, last year, uh, via the service providers and support groups. They had 302 providers, mostly male mother respondents, um, and two, two family homes, but really demonstrated symptom worsening in about 65% of these participants, um, and symptom worsening up to 60%, 70% in those with ADHD and anxiety disorders. There is substantial 80%, almost 80%, um, worsening of overall health and well-being, um, within this particular population, according to their parents, with watching more TV, decreasing exercises, exercise, increased anger, um, difficulty and stress, uh, noted by the parents. The parents themselves, or they were noting this about their children. The parents themselves, again, thought that they had difficulty balancing general impact on well-being and worsening pre-existing mental health conditions. Some of that is really important to think about because there is a substantial relationship between, um, parental stress and child abuse. And in fact, there's been a, um, demonstration of increased child abuse, uh, in the UK. It's documented, 149% increase in abusive head trauma within a month period of the U- UK lockdowns. The thing that's probably most disturbing, um, or, you know, the things that we're just learning about is mental health-related emergency department visits and, and suicidality. So there was an MMWR that was done, um, earlier or at the end of last year, really documented January 1st through October 17th of, of last year and compared mental health-related emergency department visits in 2020 to 2019. What we saw was that there were similar number of mental health-related ED visits, um, across this 42-week period. However, the proportion of, uh, total visits that were mental health visits increased over time, starting about March of last year, um, until the end of the study, which was in October. They also examined this, uh, by age. Children aged zero to four really didn't have much of an issue. Those who were five to 11, you could see the curve start to separate between that 2019 and 2020, with those in 2020 having slightly higher, um, proportion of, uh, their visits being mental health visits. And then certainly those who are 12 to 17, those curves are certainly separating, um, in 2020, um, compared to 2019 with substantially higher, uh, proportion of mental health visits, um, in that population in 2020. And then finally, um, a study that is in pre-print right now, uh, in pediatrics that documents suicide ideation and attempts in a single pediatric emergency department. Um, they compare it before and during COVID-19. So this was, um, 2020 and 20, in 2019, um, as well, the comparison. They had a representative group, 59% female, 50% Hispanic, next, and 9% non-Hispanic Black or African-American. They did routine screening of suicide risk, which is what they do in their emergency department anyway, and they compared 2019, um, screening results to 2020 screening results. They had over 9,000 respondents within this, or screened over 9,000, um, people. Um, what they saw was when you compare March 2019 to March 2020, significant differences there. July 2019 to July 2020, significant differences with 2020 being higher risk of, um, suicide-related behaviors or suicidal ideation. And then suicide attempts, again, in 2020, February, March, April, and July, saw physically significant increases in suicidality or su- suicide attempts. Um, these corresponded to temporal changes in Texas, which is where this took place. So in, uh, Texas in March, um, they had the lockdown. Things in, improved in May and then went back in June to increased lockdown. And so you saw the temporal relationship there. Certainly, there are some limitations to that, but it is certainly concerning. That is one, uh, that's one, um, emergency department, but we are anecdotally seeing that across the country. I'll stop there and see if there are any questions. There are resources that people have created in order to try to, um, combat this as an issue.
Thank you so much for being here, Dr. Zimmerman. Um, board members, thoughts, comments, questions? Ms. Smiley?
Um, thank you so much, Dr. Zimmerman. My question is around, um, the thing you just said about there are a lot of resources people have used, um, to combat this. And I'm thinking about the fact that this pandemic is going to continue for a very long time. And we've seen that, um, you know, and many of our families are still choosing the virtual option, right? And e- even, even some families who may be experiencing some of these things because of their health risks and lots of reasons, people are choosing that. Um, and so, I would just love i- if there are things like that, that you are able to share with Dr. Felder or the board, um, not necessarily out loud right now, but just resources. I think that would be helpful, um, as we continue to try to hold everybody.
Absolutely. I, I'm happy to share them. Um, it's in the PowerPoint that I have. And so she's welcome to use those and I'm happy to send if that, they don't work.
That'd be wonderful.
Other board members? I don't see any, but we are so appreciative of, of this information, Dr. Zimmerman. Dr. Felder, is, um, was there anything you wanted to say before we move to the next item?
Well, I too wanted to thank, uh, Dr. Zimmerman and certainly will, uh, share the resources that she shares. And when we, uh, convene to talk about the academic, uh, data and the mitigating strategies, we'll share, uh, some of the mitigating strategies that we're using in the district, uh, to help, uh, support, uh, students and staff's physical and mental, uh, health. And so thank you again, uh, Dr. Zimmerman. All right. So with that, I'm going to shift now to Dr. Gammon. Dr. Gammon, as you know, is the Executive Director for Curriculum and Instruction. And Dr. Gammon will introduce, um, uh, Mr. Jared Gibson, who is with, uh, TNTP, the New Teacher Project, uh, and they will talk about the literacy audit, uh, contract. So, uh, Dr. Gammon.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. And we are gonna shift forward, uh, to our, I believe, slide 65. Um, a- as you all know, our COVID journey started in March of 2020, uh, where there was an abrupt stop to teaching of new material and conducting state assessments. As a result, we did not have our usual tools for determining student learning progress. Um, this created a void for our 2021 school planning, um, in preparation for next school year and beyond. Um, Orange County Schools is embarking on a literacy audit. Uh, the purpose of a literacy audit is to identify root causes of the gaps in literacy student achievement, um, and to provide concrete recommendations the district can take, uh, to close those gaps. Um, at this time, Jared Gibson from the New Teacher Project is here, um, to discuss the literacy audit proposal.
Great. And Dr. Gammon, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
Perfect. All right. Well, uh, members of the board, Dr. Felder, everyone else, thank you, um, so much for having me this evening. I know, um, for, for many of the board members, I, I joined you all almost a year ago, uh, to talk about this literacy audit. And unfortunately, a week or two later, everything with, with COVID sort of changed the direction of things. And so, um, we're, we're returning to y'all this evening to propose doing this literacy audit, um, this spring so that the school district has additional information to, um, act on some of the, the literacy gaps facing in the district. Um, so if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So just, uh, to give folks a little bit of background about our organization and some of the work we've done around, uh, student achievement. TNTP is a national nonprofit and it's been around for, uh, over 20 years. Uh, we were founded by teachers and we work with school districts across the country to make sure that the kids have the type of instruction that they need to be successful. Um, we're working in over 40 school districts this year, including several here in North Carolina, including Guilford County Schools, Charlotte Mecklenburg, and Cumberland County this year. Um, and over the past few years, a lot of districts have been really interested in digging into some of the, the data that they've seen around uh, student achievement gaps in literacy and math in particular. And so we put together an audit service where we can really do combined classroom observations, student work, and teacher surveys to really identify some root causes of what might be causing those gaps. And, and we've done that in over 100 districts across the country over the past few years. Um, and last year, we worked with the district to put together a proposal for a literacy audit and we'd like to bring that proposal back to you all this year. Now, so if you can go to the next slide. So this year, uh, uh, Dr. Felder and Dr. Gammon asked us to, you know, propose a, a literacy audit that would actually reach all of the schools in the district. And we'll go through sort of five phases of the, the work. The first one is to work with the district to make sure we hone in on some key questions that the district really wants answered about literacy student achievement. And then based on those questions, we'll customize our data collection process, which will usually involve a combination of classroom observations, student work analysis, and a teacher survey. And those elements can be customized, again, based on what the district is really looking to, to find out more about. And we use tools that are nationally vetted and research-based, um, including the instructional practice guides from Student Achievement Partners and the Equipped Student Work Protocol, which was developed by a consortium of educators from 28 states, including North Carolina. And excerpts of those are included in the appendix of the proposal that I believe, um, was attached to, uh, the, the board agenda. You can go to the next slide. Once we collect all of the data, we'll also, uh, conduct an equity analysis using classroom-level demographic data from the district. And so what we'll be able to do is, is find out if there are any differences by subgroups that the district is interested in, such as race, socioeconomic status, um, uh, English language proficiency, et cetera, to see if there are classrooms, for example, that have greater proportions of white students. Um, do those classrooms have, you know, higher levels of literacy instruction? Do those classrooms have texts that are more complex, um, et cetera, versus to, uh, classrooms with greater proportions of students of color? So we'll be able to look at that with all the data that we collect and, and report to you all if there are any differences by those student subgroups. We'll prepare a report, share our findings and recommendations. Certainly would be more than happy to, again, present those findings to this board as well, so you can see the outcomes of this. And then the, not just making the, uh, the presentation to this school district, but also spending a few months advising the district to prepare for next year. So, for example, based on the findings, helping put together a scope and sequence of professional learning for leaders in the district, as well as providing resources and pre-built sessions so that the district has a starting point. I would also add on to this, given that a lot of school districts are starting to think about what does accelerated learning look like for the summer and next year, that those types of conversations and advice would be a part of this as well. That's something we're finding that a lot of school districts are working on. Um, so with that, I'll just pause there and take any questions. In, in case, uh, Dr. Gammon, is there anything else you wanted to, to add?
No, not at this moment.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Gibson. Um, board members, any questions? Ms. Hauser? And Ms. Smiley?
I have a couple. What, what is, could you just give us maybe a case study of, of a project like this where what you actually did, what came, what result came out of it? And what the district did with it and how it changed outcome?
Yeah, so I can, I'll, I'll share a couple of examples. I, you know, I don't think I would be able to share the exact, um, you know, s- school district. I would have to check with them first. But so, some common outcomes, for example, would be if we find that students, uh, have access to grade-level skills in those reading foundational skills classes. So here in Orange County Schools, you use Letterland. Um, let's say we, one finding would be that, yes, the skills that students are taught are on grade level, but actually the amount of time that students get practice using connected text with those skills is pretty low. So one recommendation would be students would need more access to decodable readers to practice those reading foundational skills. And so I, I do recall, you know, recently a school district where that's been a recommendation and they went and purchased additional decodable readers to supplement, um, their reading foundational skills curriculum so that students had more opportunities to practice those skills with a connected text. Um, so that's an example of the type of, you know, data point and then recommendation and then district action.
That's actually very helpful. Um, now, you talked about, um, resource, uh, you, you talked about, um, equity and looking at differences. And we have, we know we have in our schools some resource inequity. And it's everything from access to AID to some schools have less experienced teachers, some have more experienced teachers. So is that something that you're gonna feed back to us about how that might be affecting student achievement?
Yeah, and, and really what we would be able to do is to, to just, to be able to look at and say, are there inequities in really specific components of literacy instruction? So, for example, um, students should be reading complex grade-level texts, right, that are in a certain lexile range, depending on the, the grade level. And in each of the classrooms we observe, we will, you know, get a measure of what text students have access to, the complexity of those texts. And then using classroom-level demographic data, be able to, to report to you all, actually, you know, in classrooms that have greater percentages of students of color, um, do students have more access or less access to those complex texts? So that's one example. So really what you'll be able to see is, to some extent, quantified, are there inequities based on those different subgroups? And really, we can look at that by any subgroup. So if the district is interested in, in, in race, we can certainly look at that, socioeconomic status, English learner status, any subgroup, um, as long as we're given the classroom-level demographic data, we can do that analysis. Um, and to be clear though, that will all be um, anonymized. So we, we won't ever see student-level data. It's just classroom-level data.
So, so you're commenting more on the, what they're teaching, not who, not the teachers of the specific.
That's correct.
Um, and then finally, how are you gonna navigate the hybrid world? So thank you.
Um, well, I, I hate that I can say that we've had quite a bit of practice with that, but, um, but we have. Um, so our staff members, um, would, would join the observations, uh, remotely. Um, we've, we've gotten, had a fair amount of practice with this and we would work with each school leader, you know, to make sure we're, we're scheduling those at a time that, that makes sense for that school. Um, usually what happens is that at, at a minimum, a laptop is put, you know, in the back of the room if it's an in-person class. Obviously, if it's a remote class, uh, we just join remotely. And we'll, we'll sort of do, you know, however the district wants, right? So some school districts ask us, especially if it's an elementary class, to say hi and introduce ourselves. Other ones ask us to just keep our cameras off, stay muted, and just kind of be in the background. Um, so we're pretty flexible and accommodating to that. For any of your in-person classes, again, having the laptop kind of in the back of the room is, um, the ideal. Even better if someone, um, can also walk around, uh, also on a phone or, or iPad so that we can see up close a few things. Um, but it actually works, um, it's worked pretty well.
Other board members? Where is, uh, Ms. Smiley? Where is, Ms. Smiley?
I just have a quick, I just have a quick one, which is, you said you'll also be looking at student work. So you'll be looking at student writing. You'll be looking at the kinds of prompts they're getting and sort of the rigor of them and that sort of thing as well.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, part of our sampling process, so, you know, once we get a, a master list of teachers and course sections, we'll do a random sample of all of those. And then with each teacher, we'll ask them to upload us, take pictures of and upload a certain number of, of samples of student work. That's correct. And part of our presentation to you all on the backend of this will be, we'll show you excerpts of, you know, actual passages, actual writing prompts, et cetera, that students in the district are getting.
All right. Well, um, I know I am very comfortable because this is the second time we have had the joy of hearing from Mr. Gibson about this process and I am excited about it. And I wonder if there is a motion to approve this. Motion from Mr. Atherton and a second from Ms. Hauser. Is there any other discussion or questions before I call the vote? Okey doke. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Our literacy audit contract is approved. Thank you, Mr. Gibson and Dr. Gammon for the information tonight.
Thank you.
The final item on our agenda this evening is school names research and we will welcome Dr. Deena Keeling to discuss that with us.
Good evening, everyone, again. Last month, I presented a summary of the review of school names as an information item for the board. And in the public comment, there was questions around the appendix and I do want to refer the public to the January 11th board meeting. Those appendices are listed as supporting documents. Initially, this presentation on the review of school names was to be presented at the January 11th meeting. And we actually ran out of time and so didn't get to present that until a later meeting and I didn't upload all of the supporting documents again, but that's where those appendices can be found. Tonight I will discuss the feedback and recommendations that were provided by various stakeholders and then give the floor back to the board for questions and action on next steps. As a reminder, this review, review was conducted as part of the board resolution for the board's next steps towards equity in education and OCS for the 2020, 2021 school year. Item number 11 in the board resolution calls for a review of the names of buildings in our district to examine their origin and compliance with policy 1030 Equity in Education. In addition to the review of school names being submitted for board and community member review within the board agenda items, the summary was also provided to the extended cabinet, the equity leads for them to share with their school staff, the OCS Equity Task Force, student equity teams and organizations. And we did have public comment on the school names at the January 11th board meeting. So there was also feedback presented at that meeting. Next slide, please. Based on the feedback, some of the processing that people did as they considered the current and even as they began to think about the future naming of schools seemed to be around taking into consideration, who do we want to memorialize and recognize? What history do we want to memorialize and recognize? And should the naming of schools be reflective of the values and skills we wish to promote within our students? We must remember that the board resolution calls for names of buildings to comply with policy 1030. Policy 1030 states that Orange County Schools shall review and revise existing policies, programs, professional development and procedures to reflect applicable laws and the district's definition of equity. So this review must be conducted through the lens of the district's definition of equity. And in order to comply with policy 1030, building names should also reflect the district's definition of equity. Supporting document that I have uploaded for this meeting is policy 1030 Equity in Education. At the last meeting, I went over the, the district's definition of equity. And so the public can also refer to the policy for that complete definition. Four school names generated the most energy, AL Standback, Central, CW Stanford and Cameron Park. I want the board and public aware that feedback received was not only based on the review of the name of school buildings document that I submitted to the board, but also on additional research that stakeholders conducted on their own, as well as the narratives of community members. We have staff and community members who attended Orange County Schools during segregation and some of their lived experiences were collected as part of feedback. AL Standback and Central generated some similar cons, comments because of the linked history. While some people felt the names conjured up scenes of segregation that they not want represented in the school names, for the community, Standback and Central evoked completely different feelings. Standback was viewed in a positive light because of his commitment to advancing his all-black segregated school in spite of lack of resources, his ability to integrate schools and the hope that he instilled in his students. The community fought to get the school named for him. One person recalled going out into the community door to door to garner that support. Similar responses were given about Central, which was named after Central High School, the segregated high school where AL Standback was the principal. The staff at Central requested that the name of their school remain unchanged and expressed a desire to know even more about the school tie to the historic Central High School. The Equity Task Force recommended leaving the names of Standback and Central unchanged since AL Standback fought to remove barriers and inequitable outcomes for staff and students, all of which shows that these names were in compliance with policy 1030. If you refer to policy 1030, you will see that the definition of equity states discusses the removal of barriers and inequitable outcomes for staff and students. And so these school names seem to be in compliance. CW Stanford is credited with serving as a member of the OCS School Board for 26 consecutive years, 16 of which he served as the Chair of the Board. The feedback on CW Stanford was around his serving as the Chair of the OCS School Board during redlining, where boards were, where blacks were denied financial services and their homes and neighborhoods were devalued. And at a time when the board refused to integrate OCS schools with funding from segregated schools and would not allow black residents to speak at school board meetings. Stakeholders expressed that although Stanford may have been supportive of education, his support did not seem to extend to members of the black student body and community. The definition of equity calls for fostering a barrier-free environment for all students, regardless of their race, class or other personal characteristics, countering unfair policies, programs and practices, and allocating resources for equitable outcomes. These were not the actions of the OCS School Board during CW Stanford's tenure as a member of and as the Chair of the Board. A school name associated with the OCS School Board during this time does not comply with the district's definition of equity. Paul Carrington Cameron is known for being one of the most prominent slaveholders in North Carolina history. The name elicited a number of feelings from stakeholders. One person said they felt nauseated. Another said they didn't want a school's name to make people feel uncomfortable. And one student said, it makes me feel upset that some schools in our county are named after slaveholders. How is the county gonna fix equity if schools are named after slaveholders? There was one person who made reference to Cameron giving some land to some of his emancipated slaves. And people said it was just the times and people make mistakes. People forwarded me the article from Cameron Village in Raleigh, changing its name because of the association with a slaveholder. The district's definition of equity calls for countering biased behavior that causes harm to specific groups. Harm for black people and the vestiges of racism and other forms of discrimination that were bred during slavery continue to account for the negative and inequitable outcomes for staff, students and community. A school name whose origin is rooted in slavery does not comply with the district's definition of equity. There was also just general feedback on the naming and renaming of schools. People felt that it costs money and doesn't change history. Others thought that this is the step we should be taking. But what people discussed was having no idea about the origin of the names of the schools. Said by both staff and students, and they all urged that we educate students, staff and the community, not just about the names, but about the history of OCS. I have submitted a document with the feedback for, for the board and for the public's review. Other questions at this time?
Thank you, Dr. Keeling. Questions, comments, board members? Ms. Smiley?
I'm wondering if we should extend for a bit here so we can have a little bit more of a discussion. I'm gonna motion that we extend to 9:45.
I have a motion from Ms. Smiley. I have a second from Ms. Hauser. Okay, Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yeah.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
We have until 9:45. Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Board member, stop, feedback. I know this is a tricky conversation to get into, but. Ms. Doyle?
I'll start. At first, I want to thank Dr. Keeling for her leadership and all this research. And as, as difficult as some of this is for various reasons and for various people, I think it's really important to have these conversations. And I just, I didn't know about Cameron until I visited Staggville's plantation about a year and a half ago. And it, it really is just sickening and shocking to absorb all of that information. And so I, I am firmly in favor of renaming Cameron Park.
Thanks, Ms. Doyle.
I, I, this is Brenda. Well, I guess you figured that out already. I, I agree with, with Ms. Doyle. But of course, I knew it long before I was on with Staggville on that, on their board. I, I agree with it. And, and let me say that, you know, while we're naming schools and roads and highways and all that, it's no, it's not a replacement for justice. I, I think it can be a part of it and it, and it's a good start. So I certainly agree with, with the whole Cameron Park piece because anybody who's engaged in the subjugation and enslavement of human beings, it is a real tough pill to swallow.
Ms. Moore and then Mr. Atherton?
I do agree with Ms. Doyle and Ms. Stevenson, oh, excuse me, Ms. Stevens, in regards to renaming Cameron Park. But I also would like to say, based on the findings from Dr. Keeling and what she has presented in policy 1030, I agree with name changes for the school. I do want to be very clear that my decision to rename CW Stanford Middle is not personally directed towards Mr. Stanford nor the family name, but towards the racial inequities during that particular Board of Education Administration. So I've, I've spoken with people of color from that generation and they advised during that board administration timeframe, people of color were not allowed, allowed to attend board meetings. And the overall community of color lost trust in the school board and the district. And the same feeling of distrust is very present today. So I feel like going forward, this name change could be a step towards rega, regaining trust of communities of color. And it's very important for communities of color to know that we are actively addressing inequities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, I would like to say too, that it's very evident Cameron Park, we need to take action on that. It is something that's long overdue and I'm glad it's before the board to have a discussion about it.
Ms. Hauser?
I'm, I'm okay on renaming Cameron Park. I think it is, it's overdue.
Ms. Hauser, could you speak up a little bit? It's hard to hear you.
I guess it, I think I'm gonna have to do a different, I'm gonna switch there. Can I do a mashup? Now, let me see if I can, let me see if I can do this. So, so I'm fine on changing the name of Cameron Park. Not sure about the timing to talk about that. But I'm really choking on the CW Stanford. You know, and I understand there's, there's some history, you know. The history that I know is that CW Stanford is known for accelerating the, the establishment of Orange High School, which is our first integrated high school in the county. So I'm not sure, you know, and when I hear things like a school board and they're rolling redlining, I don't understand how a school board would have a roll and redlining. So I think we have an obligation because unlike Cameron Park, who is not an, a renowned, not established, but a renowned Orange County family, I think we have a responsibility to think deeper into our community and understand this history fully. And, and so I just think that, that I, in, in many circles, CW Stanford is a proud name for our black and white community. So I'm just choking a little bit on this. So just a.
Ms. Doyle?
I'm sorry. I know I've already spoken. I, I find this, this, I don't know if we need to go through a different process. I feel like we need to have a bigger conversation about Stanford. But at the same time, I really want to support what, what Ms. Moore put forward and I, I don't in any way want to do anything that prevents development of, of trust with communities in our district. So I, I really support what Ms. Moore had to say. I just, I don't know if we, if the process has to be different, but I feel like it, that it's been so far. I, I, but that's where I don't know.
Mr. Atherton?
I, I was just gonna say, I feel the same way as Ms. Doyle does, that I think that one deserves more discussion. I think Cameron Park is very obvious, CW Stanford. I mean, even in the comments and discussions, and I have reached out to people in the community as well, that I had no knowledge or they weren't sure. And I think to try to be transparent to our community and make sure everybody sees the data now and there's a better conversation around that. I think we should have a longer conversation on that.
So, and Ms. Smiley, I don't know if you want to say anything before I jump in here. I just, I'm happy to, but.
I can, I mean, I can say a little bit, which is that I am embarrassed how long it took me to know the origins of the name of Cameron Park and support changing the name. And in terms of Stanford, there are a couple of things on my mind. One is, I, I do wish that we had had in this process, a little bit more engagement with the family because of how recent this history is. At the end of the day, At the end of the day, for me, um, this, um, because his name is associated with a period in Orange County schools where the school district for many years um uh delayed integration is for a very long time, it's that association with the board, not um sort of a person, anything. I wouldn't presume to judge his heart or like make judgment and try to weigh the different goods and the bads. Anybody who commits that many years to the school board presumably like cares, cared about education very much and a lot of things like that. Um, it, um, but you know, historically, what the board did, its decisions during those years is very easy to know. Um, there, Mrs. Rosetta Austin Moore wrote um The Impact of Slavery on the Education of Blacks in Orange County, North Carolina, sixteen nineteen to nineteen seventy, um, that, that describes uh the actions of the board in those years, the board, um, including um a quote, um, "There were disparities in the physical plans and curricular offerings and cultural developments were glaringly inadequate in the Orange County schools from the beginning until the end of segregation in public schools." So picking an example, in nineteen forty-six, the board allocated funds for library books, and the white schools got seven hundred ninety-six dollars and the black schools got seven dollars. Um, Brown v. Board passed in nineteen fifty-four. Um, seven years later, the parents of twenty-one black students in White Cross applied to transfer to an all-white school in their community, which was closer to home than the one they were forced to go to in Hillsborough, and they were denied. In nineteen sixty-four, the Federal Civil Rights Act passed, um, and the plan that Orange County schools and a lot of schools in North Carolina were using um to sort of do integration very, very slowly was declared unconstitutional, and that year, more than half of Black students, um, so over a thousand students, requested assignments to the all-white schools, and the board decided to create a plan in compliance with the Civil Rights Act in which four Black students attended Orange High School. Um, and you know, the, the, this board um had a history in those years, as many boards in the South did, of um uh not pursuing integration um at the pace that it should have done. And I'll just, I'll just read one, one quote from, from here, and in terms of whether we spend more time or less, um, I, I don't have a strong feeling about that, actually. I'll just read this. It says, "For some people, this will be the first time that they've read of the many brave citizens in Orange County who worked so hard to improve their schools. Some of them appeared before the board for over thirty years, and their requests were turned down each time. Some of them paid for their activism with economic sanction." Um, you know, I, I don't think it's wise for us to try to pass judgment on, on Mr. Stanford, but to me, naming a school after someone who, one way or another, was sort of a part of that time and is associated with that period of time, um, I, it is just very challenging to me, um, and so that's not something that I'm gonna be able to support.
Um, I feel the same way, and I have a really strong opinion about not spending more time on it. I hear this board spending a lot of time talking about how we don't wanna waste time or do other things in the middle of a pandemic, and yet I hear us also saying we should spend more time trying to dig into this history, which in my mind is incredibly clear, that it was a very difficult time to be a person of color in Orange County. And I think we can make a swift, decisive, keeling decision tonight and move forward into the future. Again, I, I also wish we had engaged more with the Stanford family to let them know that this was going to be on the table, and I will take some responsibility for that. I did reach out to the town board and didn't hear back until today, which is not their fault, it was my timeline. Um, but by that point, I had already heard from the Stanford family, and I'm glad that they were able to join us for public comment tonight. But like Ms. Smiley, I don't think that there's much value in assigning uh s- some feeling to Mr. Stanford's heart or, you know, his individual acts otherwise, because for me, the story is clear enough. So I hope that we will move forward and make bold action tonight and swift so that we can move forward, and if uh the, the testimony from Black members of our community is enough for me, because I believe them. So for me, I wonder if there is a motion to rename Cameron Park and Stanford. If this motion does go through, then I would ask that we define a nomination process at the next meeting and determine how we will move forward. This vote would simply be saying that we would rename school, the schools, oh, and it would take effect over the summer. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to change the name of Cameron Park.
That's a motion from Mr. Atherton to change the name of Cameron Park. Who said the second?
Bonnie, Hauser.
Hauser.
Can I, can I have a friendly amendment?
Um, are there any other comments before we vote on this motion?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, and that's that we um, we delay further discussion on it until after school reopening is complete.
Uh, I mean, do you want to fully vote on amending that, or do we all want to retract motions?
Oh, I don't know, I'm just making an amendment.
I mean, fine, okay, let's call that. Okay, Bonnie, that was a motion for an amendment to the original motion. Is there a second to that?
I just have a point of order, because.
It's, it sounds like there's not a second to your motion, Ms. Hauser. So I'm gonna call the vote for Cameron Park. I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
Is there a motion to also change the name of Stanford Middle School? Wants to change, I mean, are we gonna come back and talk about this again? No one else wants to change the name of Stanford?
I would love to come back and talk about this.
When, when do we wanna do that?
Next meeting?
Well, no.
No, we have, I, I'm sorry, I just am having, you know, we're, we're now um in the middle, we're about to go into a high um reopening, and I, this is a, um, not just for us, but it is an important conversation for the community, and I think we need to give it the time and space, because we're talking about a family that has done a great deal to the community, and I just don't wanna rush into it, and I don't want it to be the, the sideline while we're in the relationship.
I'll just, I mean, a concern that I have about that as a process and, and, and is, is that it's pretty recent history, and it's, it's personal for a lot of people, and um I actually, like, I, I think that would lead to more sort of like public debating about the character of the man, and like, that's not what's driving my vote, actually. Like, it is actually the theme driving my vote is what the board, the decisions of the board at that time. Um, so, so, you know, that's, that's what I'm uncomfortable with.
Mr. Atherton?
Yeah, so mine, mine isn't so much of his heart. Mine is, while he was on the board, did he vote against these things, did he vote for them? I mean, that's just what I'm struggling with, is throwing the baby out with the bathwater, assuming that he did vote that way all the time. I, I have no idea. I mean, I, I would like to at least us to get some of that information to understand. I mean, I, I agree that if, if he was all in and, you know, that's what was going on, then that's a different perspective, but now I feel like I don't have that information.
Can, can I make a motion? Uh, can we, I would, I have the book that Sarah, you were holding up, and I don't re- I haven't read all of it, and I don't remember. Do we have a, a segment that presents just sort of the timeline? I, I'm in support of what has been said about um the board during that, during that time and resisting integration, um, which is absolutely true, but I don't have in my mind. I would, I would really like there to be, um, you know, maybe a source, maybe for me to present some of the information that, that Ms. Smiley was referring to, so it can be a little bit more publicly known. I don't think everybody knows the time period as well. I'm sure some people totally do, and some of us really don't, and I just think it'd be helpful to present that and make that statement, um, you know, plan to make that statement, that, that this is, this is about a board time period that um protected segregation, and so we want to move on from that one. So I guess my motion would be that we actually take time to present that timeline that we're referring to, that form.
Uh, I mean, is this something we need a motion for? We can, I'll just put it on the next agenda. Eva, is that something that needs to be voted on?
Well, at this point, I think the, the motion has been made, so.
Okay.
I think it hurts, and my understanding is the motion to, was to come back with a more detailed research on the renaming of the school.
On the timeline of those years, is that what you said, Ms. Doyle?
Yes, please. And we'll second it.
Yes.
Okay. A motion from Ms. Doyle and a second from Mr. Atherton? Um, Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Well, I will put it on the next scheduled meeting at, not the, not the makeup meeting, the follow-up meeting for this, but at our next work session, it will be the first item on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn, or, um, actually, Dr. Felder, do you have anything before we adjourn?
I do not, thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
I have a motion from Ms. Stevens. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Smiley. Mr. Atherton?
Yes.
Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Ms. Hauser?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Smiley?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
We're adjourned, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, help me on this.